Welcome to the June 2025 Meeting of the Coffee County Board of Ed- June 9th, 2025, Meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education. Welcome everybody in the audience and people at home watching YouTube. It's amazing to me that our YouTube numbers just keep going up. I guess that people are liking what we're doing or some are, or they're watching on in fascination. So, Mr. Cordell, would you start us off with a prayer today?
Absolutely, be glad to. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Father, for this another day to enjoy the beauty of your creation. We thank you, Father, for the rain that you sent to water the earth and our crops. Thank you, Father, for those that are here today. We thank you, Father, for our young people that will be here, those that have a vision of going into the military, and, Father, we thank them for their service and their passion. And, Father, we just want to honor our next generation. Thank you, Father, for this team. Father, I just thank you for what you're doing in this group, and with, we thank you for Dr. Powell and his leadership in the last several months, serving as interim, and for Scott coming on. And, Father, we just pray today that you give this board wisdom and discernment in the decisions we make to make our county better. Father, I pray for protection and wisdom and, and passion for our teachers and our staff. And, Lord, that you bless this team and bless this day. This is my prayer in your son's precious, precious name. Amen.
Amen. Well, we now have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have one of our military inductees here. If we would ask her to come forward and lead the pledge for us. You know what? And if you, if you don't want to be on the spot, that's fine. All right. Everybody face the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And what is your name again?
Jalen Gratham.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have several recognitions tonight, so first off, we want to recognize Dr. Powell. And if I could get the board to come down and Dr. Powell to come up, we have a presentation so for, so we can get the board members to go down, because I'm sure we'll want to get a picture with Dr. Powell down there.
I stand in the back, you can still see me over there.
Dr. Powell, we wanted to give you this plaque. It says, "Your energy, leadership, and distinguished service will remain with us forever." Coffee County Schools 2425, and we present this to you, Dr. Braden Powell, and congratulations. If any of the board members, well, we'll give you the mic and then we'll have.
I appreciate it.
Any board members want to chime in?
As I was telling my staff last week at our meeting, this is where I started my career in 1967, so it's a pleasure to end it in 2025, and I've enjoyed it. I appreciate the honor that the board gave me to do this. I think we've made some strides. We've kept things under control, I think, for the most part, as best we could. I've got an office staff that is excellent, staff, principals, teachers, the whole school system has a lot to, lot to be thankful for. We've got some work to do, yes, but we've come a long, long way. I can assure you of that, so thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Let me say something first. Dr. Powell, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
You've just been such a special blessing to this school system in the last year. You've brought just a measure of calm and peace, and I just want you to know how much I'm gonna miss you.
Well, thank you. I'll miss y'all too, especially having to get up at 6:30 in the morning. I won't miss that.
You won't miss that.
But I've enjoyed working with y'all, I certainly have. It's been, it's been my pleasure, to be honest with you. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I was in his favor.
You know, when I, when I first came on this position, about three people said, "Now, you're gonna have to watch Robert Gilli. You're gonna have to keep an eye on him."
Both eyes.
And I, and I said, "Folks, Robert doesn't bother me. I can talk with him just like anybody else," and we've had a very good relationship. I appreciate you, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you, Chris. Thank you. Thank you, y'all. We came both, I go back to 1967, believe it or not.
Is that what I am?
Probably about a month or two, that's what that is. Jennifer, you're the silent one of the group.
Not really. Maybe in here.
Maybe in here. Scott and I go back a long way. He was one of my students in fifth and sixth grade at East Coffee, early 70, somewhere along in the.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay.
Soon we had a new lab.
So, I did a pretty good job of helping out a little bit.
Yes, you did.
I'll be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we can get Dr. Powell in the middle, and everybody kind of turn and squeeze in.
Oh, y'all looking good, Say cheese. Oh, yeah, y'all look good.
The only thing I'd like to say is, you people out here, you folks up here, give Mr. Hargrove the same things that you did to me, your experience, your words of encouragement, your help, because you're very much needed. So, I want Mr. Scott to have the very same thing that you've done for me, and I thank you real quick. Thank you.
Now, we have our military inductees, I guess, inductee at this point, but come on back up and.
Good luck, young lady.
I guess everybody else already skipped out for summer vacation, so thank you.
Gulf County High School this year, we had 11 students, 11 seniors, that had entered the armed services in the four main areas, Army Navy, Marines, and Air Force. We have to, this afternoon with us, one young lady named Jaylen Gratham, right? And Jacqueline is going to the Marines, and it's like I told her, I said, "The first two or three days you're there, you'd wish time and time again you weren't there, but after that 13 weeks that you finished out, you'll be proud you made it." So, congratulations.
Yes, please.
Going into the Navy, Treathan Ross, Wayne Sudsborough, Raiden Todd, Zachary Warwick, Ian White, Arson White, excuse me, Ian Walker, excuse me. The Air Force, Hannah Rose, Army, Brighton Barnes, David Featherston, and Don Parker. And, of course, we just introduced, Ms. Gratham is going into the Marines. So, congratulations to all those young people. Bless the luck to them. We're very proud of them. Of course, we'll be very proud of the service they're providing for our country. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Now, we have a presentation on the CEP program from Ms. Cotton.
I hope this works, because I'm not very technologically advanced, but Ray, you said.
We happen to have a guy in the back of the room who kind of knows his stuff, though.
Yes.
I'm here today to talk to you about community eligibility provision, otherwise known as CEP, and you'll hear me say CUP, because I don't want to read that out every time, but that's what it stands for. And, what is CEP? CEP is a National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program meal service option that allows schools in school districts in high-poverty areas to offer meals at no cost to all enrolled students without collecting household applications. And I put below it, what that basically means, all that, is we would offer free breakfast and free lunch to all students, and they would not have to do the free and reduced application. That would not be required at all. So, that's a good thing. Okay, how to determine CEP eligibility? Rather than collecting school meal applications, which are the free and reduced applications, to make individual student eligibility determinations, schools that adopt CEP are reimbursed using a formula based on the percentage of students who automatically qualify for free meals based on their household participation in means-tested programs, or their status as foster homeless migrant or runaway child. And I'm just, what I did when I did this was I put it directly off the USDA site, because I didn't want to get it wrong. But, what that means is, it is determined using students that have SNAP, which is food stamps, or TANF, which is Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. So, these are determined by the state, not by me putting it in from an application. Also, students that are in the Medicaid program, like it's TINcare, that are designated by the state as free Medicaid students, they also qualify. So, in determining CEP, you look at the ones that the state has deemed that qualify, not through applications. So, they like to use that because they feel like they've determined who, you know, is applicable for it, not us, so. How do you qualify for CUP? For Coffee County to qualify, we had to meet an ISP number. ISP is the Identified Student Percentage, and that term is identifies students that refers to children who are directly certified through the method, methods, methods, excuse me, previously mentioned. So, for example, they take the students that were deemed that qualified through the state programs, and then they take this calculation. They take the identified students divided by the amount of students enrolled in our system times 100, and you come up with the Identified Student Percentage. This percentage, in order to do CEP, has to be higher than 25%. Ours is 50%, 50.67%. So, that is all of our schools combined. Now, if you look at each, each school individually, some of them are 60%, some of them are 40%, some of them are, all of them are 25% or higher. But, in order for us to do every school, we have to do combined, because some of them are lower and some of them are higher, and that's our average. So, we, ours is 50.67, so we do qualify. Are there any questions so far? It is rather complicated. I'm used to it, so I just run through it, but if you have a question, stop me. Okay, if we decide which we have to do CEP, your LEA elect CEP for a four-year cycle. So, the numbers that I have right now will last for four years, so I will not have to every year apply using those numbers, so it lasts four years. Participating LEAs can end CEP participation at any time or begin a new four-year cycle early if their ISP numbers increase. So, what districts do that do this? Every year, they reevaluate at the beginning to see if that percentage will raise. So, if we had more identified students next year, I could look at it and say, "Oh, my number's higher this year," reapply and use that number for four years. So, you have the option of renewing it every year, but if your number's not as good and you want to use this year's number, you can do that. So, you're guaranteed for four years anyway, that number. Okay, how much are the reimbursements? To calculate our reimbursements, the ISP is multiplied by 1.6 for the amount of meals claimed at the federal free rate. The 1.6, I think, sort of is what we would have had if we had had free and reduced applications. So, if we'd had that added on to what was already deemed by the state as free students, that's where they come up with the 1.6, so it's able to equal that out. So, Coffee County Schools' ISP is 50.67%. The multiplier is 1.6, so meals claimed at the free rate are 81.07%. The remaining 18.93% are reimbursed at the paid rate. And I didn't put it on here, but just to give you an idea, the, the rate for this past year, I don't know what the free rate will be this coming year, because they haven't put that out yet, but for lunch this last year, it was $4.54 for free and $0.53 for paid. So, at the free rate for lunch, the 81.07 would be at $4.54, and the 18.93 would be at $0.53. And then, for breakfast, it was $2.84 for free and $0.39 for paid. So, at 81.07, we would be, you know, getting the highest amount, but the 18.93 would just be at the paid amount, so that's not as much. Although a portion of the meals served at CUP schools are reimbursed at the federal rate, participating schools are responsible for covering any potential funding shortage with non-federal funds. Eligible schools must consider their ability to provide meals at no cost and cover their operating costs with federal assistance in any other available funds, including state and/or local funds. Our school nutrition program has a fund balance to help offset costs. So, no matter what, you have to cover, cover your operating expenses, which this year we were not able to do. But, at, with this, I feel like we'll feed more kids, and, I mean, we'll just have to see. You know, hopefully, we'll be able to, but if not, we do have some fund balance, so we can offset that. You just have to be aware when we do it, that if you are, you're short the amount, you have to make that up.
I have a, I have a question just to clarify. So, what you're saying is 81% is going to be paid full. Then, then the rest of that is a lesser amount for a child.
Yes, we get a lesser amount.
And then, if that doesn't cover the full cost.
Right.
Which it probably will, if it's a lot of participation, then you have fund balance that would cover that at this point?
I do, yes. Yes. I mean, I, I won't forever.
Right.
But I do now.
Right.
I feel comfortable trying it this year.
Right.
You know? I think we have enough fund balance. We, we went into it a little bit this year, but.
Right.
I feel like we have enough to, to cover it.
And I know you're required to have so much fund balance anyway, so you can't get below that.
You have to have three months' operating expenses.
Okay.
So, but we have enough right now that we can do it. Okay, using calculations from the CEP's, from the state, the CEP tool from the state, with sales staying the same, reimbursement for lunch and breakfast here would slightly decrease. So, I figured, I used their tool, and with no increases, we were just like a thousand or 2,000 decrease in what we would get back in reimbursements. If sales increased, then the reimbursements will increase from the current reimbursements for lunch and breakfast. So, meals should increase when they're offered for free. I mean, if you put in like 5% increase, our reimbursements went up from what we currently get. If I put in 10% breakfast and lunch, it increased. So, as long as we have an increase in meals, I think we'll get an increase in our reimbursements, and we'll be okay. But even if we don't, we're really close to what we were getting anyway, so. The 80, really 81% free is pretty good, like a lot of people in the state, you know, have around that amount. I've checked all that out. Let's see. I did meet with Mr. Hargrove, and we decided that this was something that we supported. We both wanted to do it. We discussed all the, the good and bad, and we decided that we should try CEP for a year and piloted, and then reevaluate at the next, at the end of next year to see if it's fiscally, fiscally viable. So, if next year, we've lost a ton of money, and it just looks like we're not going to be able to maintain, we can go back. But, it may be something that I can look at the numbers again and get a better number, but I say, "Let's try it," you know? Coffee County students at all schools will eat free lunch and breakfast next school year. So, I think that's very, very good. And, actually, I know you have it on your agenda, but, and that's fine, too, but it really, the state told me that it only has to be director-approved, and, I mean, Mr. Hargrove was all for it, so I don't know if you still want to vote for it, or.
Well, I think the board would probably have to approve the provision of.
That's fine.
Of, of fund balance to, to cover any, any costs. Is that correct?
Yeah, but it won't, it won't have to cover any right now.
Okay.
No, we're good.
So, you're not anticipating dipping into fund balance at all?
Well, next year, that's when we would vote for that.
Okay.
Yeah, we will, I, I don't anticipate it, but you don't know, but.
Okay.
We're going to do our best not to, let's put it that way. But also, on another note, wanted to mention that we decided to do seven-day food packs this year for the summer feeding, and we tried it this last Friday, and I think it was very hectic. We anticipated 200 meals being given out, and as it got closer, there was a lot of interest, so we increased it to 400 and did 500 just in case. There was 967 meals given out Friday at the middle school.
Wow.
Yes. Yes. I think we had a little bit of a traffic jam, and we have a few things we need to fix, and we're going to have more help, but we had no idea, and, I mean, people came from other counties everywhere to do this, so we just thought we'd try it. We're going to keep doing it every Friday through the summer, except there's a Thursday, and we're not going to do it July 4th, or the Thursday before, but I just thought that was incredible, that we gave out that many meals. Mr. Hargrove, he, he said for me to mention that, because I was talking about this morning, but that's pretty exciting.
Well, that's probably, somebody called me, said, "What's going on at the middle school?" And I said, "I don't know." They said, "There's people everywhere."
I was actually on vacation, but I got 15,000 calls that day, which was okay, because I'm glad, and so we're going to change up a few things, but we're anticipating that many or more on Friday.
And that's not even counting the churches that's going to help with that, too, so.
Yeah, I've got some people wanting to help, and.
What are the, how do you qualify to get that meal?
They've got something now that's kind of, um, um, non-aggregate, non-congregate, non-congregate feeding program, and it's like a rural program that they're doing, and you have to prove that you're in an area that, that qualifies, and the middle school did, and so, but a lot of the state does. And if you did, you could apply, and I did apply for it, and you could serve it without parents having to come in and get it. So, it was a non-congregate waiver, I think they called it. And if you applied for it and got it, which I'm sure everybody did, that, you know, it was just one of those things, you had hoops you had to go through, and you've got, you can just hand it out. So, people just drive through, and we hand them meals, and you can do more than one day. So, we did seven-day meal packs of breakfast and lunch.
Thank you for applying for it.
Well, yeah, I mean.
It's awesome.
Yeah, this is really good. I'm excited. I just had no idea it would be this big, but I'm glad it is.
So, is CEP a federal or a state program?
It's federal.
Federal, okay.
USDA program. I got all this information from the USDA site.
Right, all right.
I mean, we report to the, to the state our numbers, and they approve it, but it's really a federal program, so I think it'll be a good thing. Anybody have any questions about CEP?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Um, this may not be the brightest question, but what happens to the balances of the My School Bucks accounts that the parents are putting money in for the kids and?
Anytime a parent wants money back that they've put in, they just need to contact my office. They can email me or call me, and we will send a check out to them. But, we're also charging for all-a-card, so even though they're eating free lunch and breakfast, we're going to have lots of all-a-card.
Yes, that was my next question. I like to leave a balance, and my daughter's, just in case she, she takes a lunchbox, but in case she wants something.
Ice free, elementary.
So, all-a-card stuff is not included in that.
No, it's only reimbursable meals.
Okay. I just imagine that there may be some that want their balance back, or.
Yes, and if they do, they just write me, and we send that to them.
Okay. Thank you so much for applying for this and for working so hard to get it going and serving the community is basically what you're doing, the students and the families, so we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and I'm glad Mr. Hargrove was on board.
Ms. Cotton has worked extremely hard, and I think both sets of, of feedings, the free breakfast and lunch, as well as the summer feedings, they're great for our kids, great for our families, great for our teachers and staff, because that student's going to be a lot more focused, but I appreciate all the hard, hard work and the time she's put in on these, both these programs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton, very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We're very excited.
Well, thank you for doing a great job.
How can you question something like that?
Well, I have the presentation, so.
Clarification. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have our called order, and we don't have any public comment, I saw, so we now have the principal report, and we have three very dedicated principals here that are always here, that, even though it's pretty darn near summer vacation, they're still here, so which one of you wants to go first?
I don't, I don't have anything to share.
Okay.
They're cleaning, they're working the floor, but I always got.
Mr. Carsley?
I know you always have something, even when it's downtime.
There are always things going on. Of course, this week, you know, Bonnaroo is coming up latter part of the week, and they use part of the high school facility. They've been there for two or three days now. Lots of folks out in our student parking lot today. Of course, they, they've rented the facility out for, you know, their distribution of some of their credentials and things like that. Things have gone really well. Everything seems orderly. We did finish up summer school last week at the high school. Had a few senior students finish up last week, and, of course, some sophomores and juniors that were also there for makeup credit, and everything went really well with summers, with our two weeks of summer school. Aside from that, things that involve our students, we've got some summer activities going on with workouts for athletics, whether that be football, whether that be basketball, both boys and girls. We've had volleyball practice going on. So, you know, you can, you can come by the high school virtually any day during the summer, and outside of that two-week dead period for athletics, there's going to be some time during the day where there are some students there for something, so. But, that, that's basically what we've got going on at the high school right now. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have a call for intent, so we need a motion to, well, first of all, on the general consent items, we have had a request to pull Policy 6.312, prohibition and possession and use of personal electronic devices, off the consent agenda, so that will go on our regular agenda as Item 12. I think, yeah, that's Item 12. So, other than that, are there any other changes to the consent agenda? So, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda and the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
I saw a move.
Mr. Cordell?
I have a, I have an objection.
Okay.
I would like to pull Policy 4.214, the AI policy.
Okay.
For further review and discussion.
4.214, that then will be Agenda Item 13.
Thank you.
AI.
And I would like to pull 6.701.
6.701, that will be Agenda Item 14. All right, that is the... 6.4, 6.701? Okay.
701.
That was correct. That was correct, 6.701, okay. Alright, any further changes?
Mr. Chair. Uh, 6.701 is also tied to 2.601. So they're together.
So you want to pull both of, okay, 2.601, alright. Any other further modifications to the consent agenda? If not, uh, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Ms. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Cordell, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Yentch, seconds? Alright, any discussion? I guess we already had our discussion.
Well, I'd like to clarify something now. Is it three readings or two readings that these policies get approved?
Two.
Two, okay. I know at one time it was three.
Unless we specify that it's a single reading, but.
Okay, so it's two times.
Yeah, we changed it a number of years ago to be two readings.
Ms. Jones, do, do you recognize that, uh, the ones that were pulled was a first and final reading?
Right.
The, the two that were pulled, or two of, two of the ones that were pulled.
So we were just going to write through one time, is that correct?
Correct.
Who determined that?
It, it's usually determined by what the, the policy is and where it needs to fit into the school, uh, year. And with, with those two coming up and, and, um, schools need to put it in handbooks and so forth, then they, they would like to have had it one and final. So it's usually that type of setup.
Okay. So the policy committee determined it?
Yes, yes, we did, so that we could get it into the handbook in time.
Okay, I was only, I don't recall it, sorry. I believe the policy 4.214 has to be submitted to the state by.
July 1st.
July 1st, and so that's why it was.
That's why it was.
As a first and final. Okay.
The cell phone was to have time, to have time to get something in the handbooks before school started.
Okay.
Alright, further discussion? Alright, um, let's go this way this time. So, Mr. Coon?
Yes.
To approve the consent agenda as modified?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Yentch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Although, aye, that passes 920. Okay, item, agenda item number one is, um, the board meeting dates. Oh, and I would like to point out, uh, we've kind of been, um, skirting Robert's Rules of Order a little bit here. That, that we generally need to have a motion on the floor before we do discussions. So we've kind of been mixing that a little bit. So we need to have a, a motion and then discussion and then we vote. So just to kind of keep it, keep it on track, because it's kind of, gets a little distorted, I guess. So just a reminder on how that goes. Um, so the first agenda item is board meeting dates for '25, '26. Uh, we have our, we, we're going back to our regular, um, for, uh, second Monday of every month, board meetings. Um, and then, uh, note is on, um, April 13th, 2026. We're going to have a self-evaluation at four o'clock, so we just do that an hour ahead of the normal board meeting. So that's why there's two meetings that date. Uh, right now, the, um, the, uh, the retreats are September 23rd and April 9th. Uh, those are the all-day retreats. And then the work sessions we have scheduled right now are there in August, November, January, and June. We can add work sessions if we need them, but this is just kind of get, get that on the schedule. So, um, so do I have a motion to approve the, uh, the board meeting calendar for '25, '26?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hanser, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cordell, seconds? Alright, any discussion on these dates? Hearing no discussion, um, we can go to, go to a vote. Uh, Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Yentch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Aye, that passes 920. Um, item number two on the agenda is actually the, uh, CEP program. But I think at this point, we really do not need to take any action, right? So we can just strike that, um, and, and unless at some time in the future, we need to move money around through, uh, fund balance, right? Is that?
You're referring to the, um.
CEP program? Yeah. Alright, then we, we will just strike item number two. This requires no action from the board. Number three is RUP Technology and Mr. Daywood.
Okay, uh.
You are on.
So the RUP is a responsible use policy. It says policy, but it's, it's really stuff that goes into student handbook. And it is based off what the other policies that were pulled to a later time were. So I'm not sure how this needs to be worked out, because what happens in met motion 12 and 13 dictates what goes into this. And this is one of those timely things that needs to be so it can be ready to go out to the students, because this is what they use for their registration. If that makes sense. And the, and the way it is written in here, pretty much whatever happens with the personal device, this will work. Because it says it follows the personal device policy. So that's okay. The artificial intelligence, uh, policy is verbatim mentioned in here. So whatever changes are made on the AI policy would have to be reflected in this, unless it's going to conflict at all. I just basically just copied the same thing, just so it would be consistent between the two documents. So I'm not really sure what we need to do on that. Do we move this one till, is, I don't know if it's possible to move this until after and make it 14? Because, and then approve that after you, we get through 12 and 13? Is that a acceptable Robert's Rule of Order procedure?
I think that's about all you can do.
I think so.
All we can do on this one, yes. So let's, let's move this to the end and I guess strike three and make, make that 15 then. Alright, um, next item on the agenda is differentiated pay and Mr. Shores?
Yeah, this is what we do each year, um, dealing with the differentiated pay. We have to have a differentiated pay, uh, set up for our system. And the, the way we have done this for many years now is for extra duties that has, uh, been performed at the school level. Uh, this could be anything from PLC leaders, grade level, grade level leaders, content level, uh, leaders. Uh, there, there's several different areas, different ways that the principal chooses to use this. It is up to a $500 compensation for, for those, uh, jobs that they do, those extra duties. So, uh, like I said, this is pretty much the exact same, um, differentiated pay plan that we have used for the past, I want to say, three years. Uh, the year before that, it was just a little bit different, but, but we've been using this, this basically the same. So, and we're just asking for approval. Uh, this goes before the state then, as soon as approval is given.
And Mr. Hargrove, does this come with your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, alright, I need a motion to approve the differentiated pay plan.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Coon makes the motion to approve the differentiated pay plan?
I'll second that motion.
And Mr. Cordell? Okay, um, any discussion? Questions?
I've got a question. Mr. Shores, is the $500, is that per month or is that annually?
Annually.
Okay.
And, and once again, that's, that's a max number. Uh, some of the, the principals actually breaks it down to a lesser amount, but, but it's, they're, they're giving up to $500, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alright, we will vote on the differentiated pay plan. Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Yentch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Coon?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Will vote aye, that passes 920. Um, item number five, special committees. And this was really, I guess, the discussion here was just replacing Dr. Dr. Powell with, uh, Mr. Hargrove. Which I don't really think needs action by, on the, on the part of the, I, I guess we're just recognizing that that's taking place.
Yes, sir.
We can formalize that.
In a few months, we're going to juggle the committees anyway.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I don't, I know, Mr. Shores, you had had some.
I, I didn't have any on this one. Back when we, when committees were changed, completely changed.
Yeah.
With, with members of the committee, but, but since you're taking the director and replacing with the director, I don't think that there would be any.
Okay.
Reasons to do any changes.
Alright, then I think we can just strike this and, and I don't think there's any action that's needed by the board, so.
Can I get some clarification?
Sure.
On committee meetings? Uh, I'm still so new to everything. Um, when, when a committee wants to meet, how do we go about requesting a meeting? Um, I've been told a couple of different things, and I just want some clarification on how, um, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. I think Mr. Coon had pointed out that, uh, two members on the committee could request. If two members on the committee would like a meeting, it can be requested by two members. But then I've also been told that it needs to be the advisor, that, I don't think we have chairman, so to speak. But maybe on one or two committees, I don't know, that the advisor requests the meeting. So I'm just confused about who requests the meetings, the committee meetings.
If, if a board member, normally if a board member would like to have a meeting, it's, it's, and, and we call it advisor or the chair of the commi- committee. Either way, they're interchangeable, same thing. Uh, usually they're the ones that set up the meeting and, and go from there. So I would say you need to get in touch with the advisor or the chair of that committee, uh, about setting up a, uh, meeting day.
Mr. Coon, I, I was asking him, and he had sent me something out of Robert's Rules stating, and it, and it said, and I didn't know, we had to look it up. That two members of the committee can request the meeting. And if there is no chairman or chairperson on the committee, then the, then technically the chair is the first person listed on the committee. I don't know if that's, I mean, that's what Robert's Rules of Order says. So if that's what we're going by, is there a policy that we go by for committee meetings, though, that would supersede that? I, I honestly just don't know. I'm just trying to get some clarification.
You have a policy 1.300, which is board committees.
1.3?
00.
00, okay.
Well, what does it say about?
Does it address that part?
Oh, alright. I'll read it here for you.
Okay.
Everybody got it, or do I need to read this?
Go and read it.
I don't think it answers your question, but 1.300, the board shall operate without standing committees, except for the executive committee. However, special committees composed of board members may be appointed by the chair at the direction of the board. And as, and as the need of the board shall require, special committees shall consist of less than a quorum of board members. Serve in an advisory capacity only. Serve no longer than the annual organization meeting of the board unless reappointed to finish a designated task. Hold meetings in accordance with the open meeting law and make reports directly to the board. Such committees shall be discharged when the work is finished or earlier by majority vote of the entire board.
So it really doesn't address my question?
It doesn't address your question.
Okay.
But I think typically what we've done is if any board member wants, you know, they just talk to the advisor. And, you know, unless there's some reason not to.
Right.
You know, I.
But it seems, it would seem more functional if you did have a committee chairman, you know.
Right.
That, you know, someone that's kind of coordinating or heading it up. Because advisors aren't doing, you know, they're not the chairman of the committee.
Yeah, Frida, Frida's right. I believe we've, we've had a chairman that's just, we've got a chairman of every one of these committees.
He would be the advisor, basically, yeah. We can change the wording, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I just noticed that it said advisor.
If it's the advisor, then that's not a school board member.
Yeah.
That's an ex officio member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it would, to me, it would be the committee should be a school board.
You got a chair of all, I mean, I've recognized and been recognized by chairs of all these committees, so I don't know when that. Yeah, I mean, you got to have someone that leads the organi- the organizational process of committee, a meeting, or anything.
We, um.
I would think so, yes.
Yeah, we're kind of having a discussion without a motion on the floor, but I guess it's kind of clarifying. We did make a change a number of months ago on the policy committee where we made the board, a board member chair. Um, and, uh, that's, I, there's no reason we couldn't do that. I would probably wait until we, you know, have our reorganization meeting or we reappoint the committees in September. But there's nothing, nothing the matter with that. I mean, is there any reason not to have a board members?
1.300 would be the place to plant whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
You're thinking there.
I mean, except for like the safety committee, probably, you know, you probably can't have a board members chair of the safety committee, but.
Mr. Chair, may I also add to it, regardless of who y'all determine who can call the committee together, whether it's the two committee members or the chair, whoever it may be. Out of courtesy, I would ask that you would notify the director of schools, uh, and also Melissa, so she may be able to help set up the committee itself. Unless y'all have a particular date, she can contact those on that committee if it's alright with you folks. But, you know, maybe a procedure like that, and I don't have any problem with that, Holly, you know, whoever y'all decide to call it, we. But if it's something I think that needs to be discussed, the director of school needs to be involved in that process, um, as, as you well know.
Yeah.
Uh, because board policy does say and dictate that, you know, any time there's complaint or concern, the director of school needs to be the one to be involved in that. So out of courtesy, I would ask that that be done, please.
Is that something that should be on the policy committee agenda?
I just got through Googling it. It says in Tennessee, the process of determining a school board committee member chairman is usually handled by the school board itself. The board typically elects its own chair and vice chair, who then serve, this is talking about the board for a one-year term. The board chair is then responsible for appointing the chairs and members of any committees. So you would be the one that would appoint the chair of the committees.
No.
That's what it says here in Tennessee.
I'm pulling down to my job, I can barely.
It says the board chair is then responsible, once we elect the board chairman, then the board chair is then responsible for appointing the chairs and members of any committees.
Is that law or, uh?
What is it?
Recommend, recommendation, it sounds pretty good.
It's, uh, I just said it's in Tennessee and it's, and it is referring to TCA 492202, so.
Oh, that's the board policy.
When you, uh, back to what Ms. Matthews said, uh, I guess y'all need to determine whether the chairman of that committee can call it or whether it takes two members of that committee.
Yeah, right, that's, that was my, my question, really.
Plug that into 1.300 as a line item.
Yeah.
Plug that into the board committee policy so that it's all right there written out.
So we probably need to put that on the policy committee meeting agenda.
I think we probably need to add to it, yeah.
That sounds good to me, so.
Yes.
So refer that to policy committee?
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright. I know you got a stack of things, but work, work through it, I guess. Alright. Any further discussion, clarification? Questions on that? I mean, I guess I would, I would, I think since we're, we're in June already, and we're going to reorganize committees or reappoint. and we're gonna reorganize committees or reappoint committees in September, we probably just let it ride until then, and then we can make some wholesale moves at that point. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. And I don't see where we need any action here, and strike that, and move on to student fees. And this was, uh, um, we kicked this down the road from last meeting because we wanted a report on what kind of student fees are collected at the different schools, so, um, do we, and I know there's a number of them here. Ms. Nelson, do you have a, a summary that you can elaborate on?
So all I have, I'm looking at these fees now, so I think these are passed, um, these weren't passed to me, they were just passed to someone else to put in here, so I'm looking at them now. So the, there should be a, um, a letterhead document you have in front of you that shows what was collected, so I think those, there's one for the high school, Raider Academy, should be middle school and Deerfield. So those are the fees I, that these schools collected from the students for, um, the school, this school year. So it looks like the high school collected around six thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. Raider Academy collected eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. Deerfield collected a hundred and twenty-six dollars, and then I didn't pull up middle school. Hold on, I'm trying to find middle school, there it is. And then middle school collected a total of... Do you know your total? It's not totaled on here. So they collected for science, STEM, and band. So around a little over three thousand dollars, about thirty-three, thirty-four hundred dollars. So these were collected from the individual schools, and then we also, um, give fee waiver to each school. Every school gets it based on their, um, free and reduced number. Um, it's a certain amount per, per free and reduced child. So we gave out a total of thirty-three thousand five ninety-three in the school year, in the school year. And that number changes every year based on the number of students that are on free and reduced. That's kind of, um, the story. Also, we, we also give funding for, um, so like at the high school, we provide funding for, um, music, um, math, social studies, art, I'm sorry, not music, art, um, science, social studies, math. Um, so each instructional area gets a, a specific amount of money based on, um, number of students they have at each school. And then the elementaries, they get by grade level. Um, so they get like one through five, um, instructional money, and then they get, um, library money, kindergarten material money, um, and then music money. So they, they get other things outside of that, but instructional, that's kind of the, um, kind of how we look at the fees and the money, the monies that go out to the schools. Is that, does that, um, I'll take questions if you guys specifically.
Okay, well, let's wait till we get to discussion. All right, so I would need a motion, um, to, I guess, approve or disapprove the, the student fee request for twenty-five, twenty-six, as written here, or some alternative, so if somebody wants to make a motion, so we can move to discussion?
I'd just make a motion that we discuss it, 'cause I think we've already approved the fee waiver for, for the next school year, haven't we?
No.
We haven't?
No.
Well, is this, is this the same? Is this what we're being asked to approve?
This, it wouldn't be fee waiver, would it? It's just approving these fees.
I mean, the fees, yes, have we, we've approved the fees for next year.
No.
No, we have not.
No, we haven't.
No.
No, it's student fees, we looked at it last meeting.
And we haven't approved them.
We have not approved them.
What we approved last meeting was the fee waiver money that was left, went back to the schools because it goes to their general funds.
I understand that, but we discussed, we discussed that, the fees for next year, and I guess we didn't make...
We, we did, we kicked it
Okay.
back to this meeting till we could get a, a summary of, of all the, uh, fees at the different schools.
I believe, we, I believe we had a vote. We had a vote on it, because that was a no vote.
Yeah, I think we took it off the ta- I think we took the motion off, is what we did.
It's in the minutes that were approved earlier in this meeting.
Yeah, we, we didn't, I don't think we voted on it, we just took it off, right?
Well, the minutes are there.
I think Mr. Cordell actually made a motion, and then he withdrew his motion.
Yes, correct. So if no motion is made on this, then these fees are not charged, correct? To the students?
They were not approved.
If they're not approved, no motion, okay.
And we waited to approve them to this meeting until we had, um, information on how, how much, uh,
Right.
each school was collecting in the way of fees.
Yes.
We need to make a motion to approve.
We need to make a motion of, to approve, or some alternative, um, but that, that's where we are at right now on, on the fees.
I need, I'll make a motion that we...
The motion? What, what's the mo-
That we, so that we can talk about, at least talk about it, so I'll make a motion that we discuss it. Make it to approve, yes.
Mr. Hansard has made a motion to
Sorry about that.
approve the fees. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cordell seconds. All right, discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ms. April, how much, uh, how much waiver money is covered by the state or federal?
So it's not broken out like that anymore. BEP used to tell us what we could do, what we should do. Um, so in the new formula, they don't, so we just chose to keep everything in the same manner that BEP had it, but the state doesn't break it down like that anymore, so...
Well, I was, I was just simply, I was, I was adding these up, and it's less than ten thousand dollars a year for all these schools of monies that are paid in by parents. I'm just wondering what we are losing if we don't submit any, how, how much funds are we losing that we would have to pay if we paid for all the fees?
Um, it would just-
Not all the materials.
It would just be additional fund balance hit to our budget for this fee, because we don't, we don't know.
Well, I'm just wondering what that amount is.
So that would be here, but it may change a little bit because of the student number, so you may get a lower or higher number based on your students' fluctuations each year. Does that make, so like, you may have more?
I think, I think, going back to what Holly did on the, a while ago, you, I believe you was correct on that, because I was the one that was requesting to know, obviously, how much the schools are bringing in. We got that, we're about ten, almost ten thousand dollars, but then how much are we losing that has been waived by the state or federal, that we've submitted for, that they've covered?
Um, well, it doesn't, so like, that would, that doesn't get broken out like that anymore. The BEP did that.
We don't know how much we've spent for these same materials that we've covered.
Are you talking like the breakout per school, or like?
Just a, just a total number. I mean, we can see with all these schools right here that almost ten thousand dollars have come in for parents for recorders and all of these, all of these items. I'm just wondering how much was erased or covered by state and federal?
So we paid-
The total cost of these materials.
So we paid the schools, like, the total amount paid to the schools was thirty-three five, is what we gave to the schools.
So thirty-three five plus the ten is about what we spend every year for these type of materials?
Yeah, plus we also, like, if you look at the, like, let me just give an example. Math, so look at math for the high school, like, they collected seven hundred and ninety dollars. We also give math funds. Um, so when I say thirty-three five, that doesn't include the instructional funds that we give to the departments. So we also give that as well, so, um, and then another one is science. We also give science money to the high school. So when I say thirty-three five, that's not all we're giving to the school. We're giving, um, also instructional departmental money that, you know, could help be helped to pay for supplies and stuff for the school year.
To cover the free ones, the free and reduced. I'm, I'm just looking for the other side of this ten thousand dollars, where the other ninety percent is.
It would, it would be in the free.
How much, what that number is.
It would be in the free, I don't know what we would call it, because, um, if we're gonna cover all, then I don't think it could be called fee waiver anymore, because it, fee waiver is only supposed to be used for kids that are on free and reduced.
Right.
So we would have to call it something different, but we would just pick up the total amount instead of charging the fees.
Well, if, you know, if, if these materials cost a hundred thousand dollars a year, or fifty thousand dollars a year, you're getting ten thousand dollars back from parents, so that would be ninety thousand, we would be paying for if we didn't worry about, or actually a hundred if we didn't worry about all of it, correct?
Right.
If that's the right number, and I'm looking for that other number besides the ten.
So we give thirty-three five to the schools?
Okay.
I, I have a question. I have a question, when these fees are collected, for instance, uh, I'll just pull one out. Uh, eighteen seventy-five at Coffin County Raider Academy. Is that only collected from the, the students that are eligible to pay? Uh, or is it that time when the fee waivers are used?
So that is what was collected from the students who paid?
Every student is asked for it.
Every student.
Their free and reduced are not, that's sent home with every student.
Yeah. So at that point, are they told that they have a fee waiver for that, for that fee? They're not? So, really, there shouldn't be any money turned back in at the end of the year, in my opinion, because there's a way of using those fee waivers.
Now, I know that middle school, high school, and Raider have a, you know, pretty good, decent way to spend their fee waiver. I think elementary struggle with it just a little bit, and we have to, um, talk about it, because they don't have a whole lot of fees, and we're required to give them.
So for instance, if they only collected eighteen seventy-five from the students? Okay. And there, you know there's some of them not gonna pay, what do they do at that point? Do they reach into their fee waiver money, that, at that point?
Yes, ma'am. So if there's a student that doesn't pay, they just use the fee waiver? Even if they could have paid, they still use the fee waiver to pay for that?
At that point?
But for only forty to fifty thousand dollars a year, we're banking on parents sending some money with these students, and then we'll only pull out if we need to, out of the fee waiver pot. So for a measly forty or fifty thousand dollars a year, we don't, we no longer get into all this and worrying about it, and then if there's any monies left over of the forty, fifty a year, we roll it over to the next year. And then we might only have to stack it with twenty or thirty.
I can tell you that, that I heard from some parents in the house, test parents, you know, on Facebook, which is hardly a scientific survey, I know, but, but I didn't get one that said, uh, student fees were an issue. As a matter of fact, some said, you know, I'd rather have free lunches or, or whatever, and, and so...
Yeah, when you have the options.
You know, I know it's not a scientific survey, but it's a data point for you, so...
I'm an advocate for all of them.
Yeah.
I guess.
All of you, yeah.
I guess my point is, teachers seem, teachers seem to not have enough money because they're on Facebook begging, and I can't figure out why. And that, you know, it looks bad on us, that asking, you know, we're collecting fees for these students every year, and then evidently there's still a need, you know, in the classroom, because there are, am I, am I looking at that right?
No, no. So I think we may have discussed this at the last meeting. Um, I obviously am not in favor of the student fee request. Um, I feel like tax dollars should cover that. Uh, this is public education, and public tax dollars are used. Um, but we had also discussed, you know, if teachers are low on supplies, could we increase the amount that we give each teacher at the beginning of the school year, which I think we said was two hundred dollars a year? Most of the time, I don't think that covers a lot of the expense it takes to set up a classroom each year. So we had, I think, tossed that idea around a little bit to give the teachers more at the beginning of the year, and that could possibly offset some or most of these student fees, if we could do that. If there's a better way to fund the money that's needed for the supplies, I mean, I'm for whatever, I just don't want the taxpayers and the parents and the students done for more money.
Is what we allocate to the parents, or the, the teachers, separate from, I mean, how does, how do they go together with the student fees? Does that go into the teacher's pot, or?
Uh, that may, that would be an April question, I think. I'm not comfortable asking, answering that.
I have a question for April. Are all the instructional funds used every year, is that carried over at each school?
Um, so we have, majority spends all of it. We do have some dollars here and there that get rolled into the pool, um, to the pool fund to roll over for next year, but a majority spend most of their money. You might have five, six, seven dollars left for a teacher that, that doesn't spend it, and it rolls into the pooled funds, and they-
I'm not talking about the two hundred dollars, I'm talking about the money that's allocated aside from that, what's, 'cause there's funds at each school for teacher supplies. Is that used up every year?
So you're talking about like the, um, instructional money that we send?
Yes.
So, yes, we require them to spend it each year, and we do have a few schools that send us back, if they do not spend it, they have to send it back to us here. So we encourage them to spend it all, but very little. So like, I think we might have collected around five or six dollars this year. Like, it's, it's spent, they use it all. Um, just, and we monitor that to make sure they do, um, because we don't want, obviously, them to send us a check back for those supplies, supply money.
So, um, when, when we designate, say, two hundred dollars a year for each teacher, this, this money that, if they collected student fees, if they did, does, does that money go for that department, that teacher? And could we just increase money for the departments? Or do, or would it be better to increase teacher supply money per teacher or per department? I, I don't know what would be better. Um, some departments are going to be more expensive to operate than, than others. It's gonna cost more to run a STEM program and a science lab than it is to run a math class, probably. Maybe, I don't know. Um, so it could be that the, the amount varies based on the program, or the department, I guess I should say.
Very much so. I mean, it's, a chem, a chemistry lab is, you're gonna spend a lot more money
Right.
opposed to a world history.
I am not for taking away from any department, that's not where I'm going with this. I'm saying that we, as a district, need to step up and provide this for our students and their parents. That's what I'm for.
So the classroom, but just keep in mind, the classroom, we give the teachers the two hundred dollars that we give the teachers, they have to use it on instructional items for their classroom.
I mean, we've got stuff on here, uh, to provide pens and paper and Kleenex and folders. To me, those are, those are just basic necessities, you know? Why are we asking parents for that kind of thing? That's just my concern.
Whiteboard.
Cleaning supplies, and, I mean, you know, Ziploc bags and Kleenex and disinfectants, paper, pencils. This is public education.
Why only Kleenex in social studies? Making the kids cry and...
Yeah, wake up.
I don't know.
I just, my, my feeling is that we, as a school district, I would like to see us step up and take care of this for our teachers, students, and parents. And not, not charge anymore. It, it's, it's challenging starting a school year as a teacher and as a parent. Some of these students are paying their own way, and I just hate to see them ask for more, personally.
And sometimes they're hounded for it, if they don't have it.
They are, they are asked every day. And some cannot pay it.
If they don't have it.
Yeah, it's really not, so... If we can fund it ourselves, I would, I think that would be wonderful, and it would take the burden off the teachers asking, and the kids and the parents feeling like they've gotta bring five dollars in for Kleenex or dry erase markers.
Well, that almost goes back to the principle of each school, to see that that's not occurring in a way.
Yes.
Because, uh, it... And, and I, I personally feel like that there's money there at each school. Maybe it's not getting in the right, in the right category or whatever. But that's something that needs to be looked at.
So Mills, Ms. Nelson, what would be the best way to proceed from a budget standpoint? Would it be to approve the student fees, and then later do a budget amendment to cover those costs, so that the fees are necessary? Or would it be better just to make a motion now to do- So that the fees are necessary or would it be better just to make a motion now to do the whole? I mean, it's kinda hard to vote on something where we don't know the exact amount that we'd be looking at. So would we be better to do the, to approve the student fees as it is and then do an offset to the, to the classrooms later as a budget amendment?
Um, I mean, if it's, if it's gonna, I, obviously, yeah, but if it, if you increase the fees, we'll do, we would have to do a budget amendment. Or, I mean, if you wanted to increase the amount we give to the schools, whether it be department or teacher or um fee waiver or whatever, then we would have to do a budget amendment in the next school year to take care of that. Cause I usually try to get those out to the schools pretty early in the school year, so we would have to take care of that pretty early um in the budget year. But as far as like which way we would go with that, I would like to discuss that with Mr. Hargrove and figure out what the best option would be. As far as which way we wanted to go.
Yeah, even, even if we stayed right where we were and just picked up what they're bringing into the schools from parents, that's less than ten thousand dollars.
I would definitely need a budget amendment for that if that was to occur.
What, you would need a budget amendment for that?
Yeah, cause I tried to budget to the penny on all those, all those items.
I thought the director and I thought y'all could spend up to twenty-five thousand and move it around without board approval.
Well, it has to be in the, it has to be in that line and I may not have ten thousand dollars.
Might not have it in that line.
A transfer depending on where the money came from.
Sound like this is an administrative nightmare, trying to keep up with all of that from all the fees and the whatever coming in for whatever. Sound like it'd be an administrative nightmare. Going back to the point Ms. Matthews is making, and I know there are different departments and they have different needs and whatever. Uh, it may be a lot simpler just to increase the amount per department. Instead of putting all the parents and the whatever through this administrative nightmare, trying to collect the fees and keep up with it and balance and determine whatever. Would it not be simpler just to increase based on the needs of the department? Set a, set a budget of whatever and then do it that way and increase the amount per uh department or school or teacher. And make it easier on the teachers and the whole system. Is that making any sense?
In, in the past, uh, whenever I was over at the school, um, we would actually have, have a few fees and that made it so that we could actually use the fee waiver to take care of it. That's how I used it at that time. Just, just a little FYI. Uh, so if I wanna do STEM projects and so forth, if we wanted to end up using that fee waiver, then we had to show that we did have a fee with it. But it's a little different now than, than that, but that's kinda how we did it.
What we have, oh, go ahead.
Well, you know, like, like Mr. Gilly said, if, if we fund this, which is what, ten thou, approximately ten thousand, that does away with it. There's no fees.
Right.
So that's simple. And then increase, increase the instructional supplies for each school. And the teachers know that if they need something, they need to go to their principal, not, not to the community. That's the way I kinda look at it.
I'm all about trying to simplify things and make it easier for our system and our teachers and the whole system.
Yes, thank you.
Now, as I understand it, let me see if I get this right. Um, if we charge a fee, then we can utilize the fee waiver and the federal government comes in and helps with that or the state government? Making up the difference for what the students can't pay? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's the way I used to whenever I was at the school. By having the fee, I was able then, if it wasn't, if we, if we didn't use it or the, the monies wasn't coming in, then we could actually use the fee waiver to do that. I'm not sure that's how the, the schools are now, but I know that's the way I do it.
April, do you know?
I mean, I know that like, um, some of the schools are like, maybe their fees aren't here because it's for a field trip. Like they have a charge of fee for a field trip and they are able to use the fee waiver for that field trip because there's a fee that's charged associated with it.
Okay, so if we don't charge for some things, then we won't have that money available to us that would come in through fee wavering. Is that correct?
So BEP used to break it out and say, this is how much you get for fee waiver. This is your number and we sent that out based on the number that BEP gave us. Um, when BEP went away and got replaced by TESA, we don't have that calculation anymore. It's not based on that anymore. So BEP used to have several different components of calculating our formula, our funding. Um, and so we don't have that complex calculation anymore. So the state doesn't say, oh, we're giving you this thirty-six thousand dollars for um fee waiver um under TESA. And it, it doesn't say that. Where BEP said this is their requirement. Those requirements bled over in, when we, when TESA, but it's not broken out like that anymore. So when we, when TESA was adopted, we kept the same principle because TESA, TESA, TESA's motto's always been, it's in there, everything's in there, but they don't show you what's actually in there. So we kinda kept everything um in the same model that we would've kept it under BEP. So we don't actually get broken out. It doesn't actually get broken out and say, this is what's for, this is what's for instructional money. This is what's for the teachers. This is what's for, we just kept the same calculation we've always used because when everything rolled together for TESA, that's what they said is, everything's in there. So that's kind of how we evolved to, through BEP to TESA. So it's not actually money that we get. It's just money that is always in the, been in the formula that we chose to keep in our calculation.
We're funding thirty-five thousand. We're just talking about funding forty-five.
And technically, we're still charging, Ms. Beth. We would, we're, we're still being charged. We're just paying it instead of the parents. I don't know. It's, the fee waiver money would still be there.
So we're really looking, like Robert says, at about ten thousand dollars to increase it, not to have to. Because you're putting this money towards the kids anyway. So if we brought up, i- if we ended up funding ten more thousand, then we don't have to fool with the whole fee, fee thing, correct?
It could be ten this year. Next year it could be twelve. It just, it just depends on your student number. Could be nine. It just depends on what your student number is for there.
But you would, you would do a budget amendment on whatever that would be.
Or a transfer based on where I could pull it from.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the student fee request. Um, so we can withdraw that motion. We can vote on that motion. And if it fails, we can propose another motion to pay for the, the fees. Um, I, um, or other options, so, um.
I think, I think most of the consensus, I mean, I can withdraw my motion if I, cause I, I mean, I like to see it. I'll pay for it as my, you know, myself. Uh, so I can withdraw my motion if I need to.
Okay. That kind of, Mr. Cordell, you seconded it or you?
I'll second that.
So.
So, uh.
So Mr. Hanser?
I would like to withdraw my motion to, uh, previously made to pay for.
All right, and Mr. Cordell agrees to withdraw the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we, uh, we then need a motion, I guess, to pay for, for the.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion to pay for our school funds for our.
Basically make the fees go away.
Yeah, our, our fee waiver. I would like to pay for our fee waiver. Make a motion to pay for our fee waiver.
No, no, the student fees.
The student fee waiver.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just need to be very careful on the way that the motion is stated. Because depending on, if you're looking at paying the ten thousand that, or whatever it was, six thousand more that was paid last time, that's one thing. If you're saying we are paying for the fees, then you need to, to realize you're looking at each one of these for each student, for each part. And we're looking at significant money when you're looking at that. So starting just the first one, social studies, three dollars for classroom supplies such as pen, paper, da-da-da, whatever. Every kid that is a, going to social studies, that would be three dollars for each student. Then we jump down to the next one. Twenty dollars for each AP science and honors for fifteen dollars. We're, we're getting ready, so you gotta be careful the way you, you do that motion on that one.
Well, then, Ed, that, well, hold on, hold on. Can I, can I say something real quick to that? Then that should've been spoke up and brought up just a minute ago in discussion because the questions that have been asked this entire time was what was in addition to the ten thousand dollars? And between what we pay for and what parents pay for, totals up to be about forty-five thousand dollars. So now if you're talking about that.
And I didn't disagree with that.
Huh?
And I didn't disagree with what you're saying.
No, but you're talking about a significant re- raise. We're talking about a ten thousand dollar raise.
Right, but, but he didn't.
Clarify.
That, that's what I'm saying. We need to make sure we clarify in the motion because one thing is what was paid last year by parents, which is what everybody's been talking about.
Mm-hmm.
But whenever you say we're gonna pay for every fee, now you're getting to each individual person in every fee that that person would made in every class for everybody that's in that class, which changed from ten thousand to significantly more. And if you're willing to do that and you wanna go that direction, it's fine. I just wanna make sure you're aware when you're making that motion.
But one would assume that the questions, because that was the documentation we were given, which was those fees you were referencing to. We were given those. One would assume that the answer from Ms. April about the thirty, around thirty-five thousand dollars, the letters that the principal sent in on their letterheads of the amounts they have collected totaled to forty-five thousand. I see how you could make an argument for social studies to be thirty-five thousand on its own. But I, I think we've got a big, no, we could.
The way I understood it. Okay, I thought we were just talking about that the, the amount of money that we were able to calculate up that we collected last year around ten thousand would be the amount that we would contribute back. Because based on what we saw last year, it was right around ten thousand dollars and we would cover ten thousand dollars. I don't think we've, there would be no point in collecting from every student for every subject. I mean, or saying that we would or, or asking us for the money because they're obviously not paying it.
I, I understand. I'm just.
Yeah.
There's two different numbers there that you're looking at.
Yeah, I understand and that's a good point.
All I'm saying is be careful in how you say it and what you're, you're, you're putting in the motion.
We may need to reword the motion.
Way out of kilter here. A lot of misinformation at last minute. And I, I, you know, Mr. Hanser still kinda has the floor on a motion, but this got way out of hand real quick on amounts.
I'm just clarifying that.
Yeah, let, let me clarify that. I make a motion to waive the student funds for up to ten thousand dollars.
Are you fine with that clarification then, since you made the second?
Um.
That wouldn't, well.
Does that work?
Up, up to ten thousand.
Uh. But how do you do that?
I mean.
Not for me.
I, I, I just think that probably.
He's not thinking right, but he's not there, he's not there just yet because you still have to cover what we already covered.
That April gave us that was collected last year, that we would put that amount in towards student fees. That's what I was thinking. Whatever that number is.
If that's the way, the motion, and he meant it.
Yeah.
But if I'm wrong, correct it.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I'm adding up these numbers. These are what was collected in student fees, correct?
And no students are gonna be asked for fees, correct? No students will be asked for fees.
They will be unless we do something different.
That's what I'm saying. If we, if this motion passed, no students will be asked for fees. And then our district will fund this, the amount that was paid in for student fees last year towards next year. But not, 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 not a fee for every student in these departments. Just the amount that we collected last year. Is that right?
I'm confused.
Well, that's, that's where I have a disconnect to what, what we're talking about here. Because what we've, what we were given and what we looked at totaled up to ten thousand dollars. What Mr. Shore's just interjected right there on the end is hundreds of thousands potentially.
That's, that's a whole different.
That's why I wanna make sure the motion's said correctly because two different things there.
I broke rule and everything else to interject here, but that was about to be a costly.
So we, we need to be careful. You're right with how we word the motion.
That's the reason why I said up to ten thousand dollars. So, you know, if that's wrong, I mean, I'm, I think we're all, somebody make, you know, tell me.
And then we need to determine what fees, what's considered fees. I mean, is Kleenex fees, is.
The list we looked at or not the list we looked at?
I mean, maybe there needs to be a definition of what fees are first.
Yeah, the list we looked at or not the list?
That's what I'm trying not to do is to make.
Usually, you know, you think of it as a workbook, as a, something that goes along with that.
I'm wondering where the rest of the story is.
Well, the, the, the motion on the floor right now is to offset fees up to ten thousand dollars. So, um.
Exactly.
Do we have discussion?
Mr. Chair, I ask a clarification from Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Are you still saying that, that we will charge these fees for next year as they are listed on the sheets from the middle school, Raider Academy and Cuff County High School and Deerfield? That's the only four schools that actually gave us a list of things that paid in the past.
No, no.
So we're not asking, asking for any more student fees?
No more. That's what I proposed.
I think, I think that's, I think we've got a big disconnect here between two different numbers that we're still not getting that we've asked for at two different meetings. I think we're not getting the numbers.
I think we would be better off to get the numbers presented at the work session and then come back and, and then vote on, that way we actually see numbers for, you know, projected numbers, what we'd be looking at. Because it's like, last year for social studies at the high school, there was zero dollars collected. You know, now they're asking three dollars for every, you know, for classroom supplies and, and every student. You know, the, the AP science is twenty dollars, honor of science fifteen dollars. Looking over here, the, the science for the high school last year, they collected twenty-seven hundred dollars. So another's more than, you know, you know, every student's required science. I know at least two years, three years, so I mean, there's gotta have, you know, there's gotta be more money. So I think we need projected numbers, what we'd be looking at before we can actually take a vote on this.
I agree.
Agreed.
I agree.
Mi- Mr. Kring, it, it is a very complex.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
It is, no, nobody had said anything. I love where our hearts are at. Uh, nobody has misrepresented anything. Everybody's been right. But it's very, a very, and it's gonna take a minute to get those numbers.
Yeah.
Am I correct, Ms. Millsen?
Yes, I think I now understand maybe, I don't, um, I think, I, I need to talk with the bookkeepers more. But now I need, I need, well, they're, well, some of them are not here and we'll, we'll be here for another week. But yes, I think I now understand kinda, and the principals on, and get a game plan on how we approach this. Cause I think we were looking at it as, in two different, in two different ways.
I'm just, like I say, and I think they're, they're agreeing, I'm just looking for the cost for those materials. Whether it comes from parents or whether it comes from the school system, what is the cost of that?
But don't we almost need to know the difference in costs and what we've already budgeted and we're already paying in? We need the difference in costs to totally cover it. Am I mistaken?
Got there tonight, I think.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to withdraw that motion then and make a motion for us to, uh, make that, to bring that up at our next work session to discuss this.
You seconded it?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that his motion was ever actually seconded, that, that last motion about the up to ten thousand. I'm not, I'm not sure it was ever, was it seconded?
I think.
Oh, okay.
I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you can basically.
So if, if Mr. Cordell seconded it, it would be him that would. The first one, okay. Did I second the?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yes, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I don't remember what I've done and hadn't done now.
Scratches here, but that's, that's what I got on my piece of paper, so.
You were reading me correctly. You were reading me correctly.
So, Mr. Hansert withdraws the motion with the agreeance of, uh, uh, is that a ru- word? I don't know, uh, with agreement of Ms. Matthews. And, um, do we need to make a motion to consider it at the, at the, uh, I think we can just take it, you know, kick the can down the road, we don't need to have a motion to put it on the agenda for the words.
Put it on the agenda.
What's that?
Put it on the agenda.
No, just keep it-
Withdraw the motion and this will be brought up at the next work session.
Yeah, and then we'll have some, some solid numbers then, all right.
Ms. Matthews, thank you for bringing it up.
Oh, thank, thank you for your comments as well, appreciate that.
All right, so, after more discussion, we take that off the agenda, kick it on to the work session, which will be next week, um, Mr. Shores, number seven, weather alert system. I, I think Mr. Hargrove's gonna do it. Oh, okay, I thought that was your item, sorry.
Dr. Powell and I met with Mr. Chambers from the Manchester Fire Department. And, um, Mr. Shores, what he shared has changed a little bit since the last meeting. Uh, at that time, we were responsible for the poles, um, and it's my understanding now, uh, there's gonna be two tornado voice-over speakers placed. One on our high school campus between the baseball and softball field, and the other one is at Raider Academy in between the soccer and football fields. And our only obligation would be paying for the electricity, not getting the electricity dug, just the electrical bill of operating those.
And this actually does not require, uh, approval of the board. Uh, before, the other was actually installing a pole on our property, uh, from somebody else. Since that's not the case anymore, it does not require the approval of the board. And we can move forward with the, the voiceover loudspeaker warning system, which is pretty nice.
I really wish they were going in all of them.
What about our poor county schools that found the county? I mean, this is wonderful, but it's gonna, you know, it's wonderful for Coffee County Middle, I mean, for, for Raider Academy and High School, but there's Coffee County Middle and all these elementary schools that's not getting that.
Why can we not put it in the others?
I, um- Remember that this is a grant that is being written by the Manchester Fire Department of the city of Manchester.
Oh, so it's gonna serve just the city?
So, there's no assurance that anything's gonna happen. But what Mr. Chambers had originally thought was that they would set a sirene system, uh, at the high school, which is what they'd have to set a pole and all that, that's, that's not any anymore. What he's asking now is, in the grant he's gonna put in there, or ask for at the high school and the Raider Academy would be that there would be a, if, if there was a tornado warning or something like this, there would not be a sirene, it would just be a voice activated thing. There's a tornado warning in this area, or tornado watch in this area, or, you know, strong thunderstorms, I'm not sure what all they would tell you. But it, there would not be a sirene as such, like we had originally had been told, I think. So, this is a grant that's being written and they're just asking for us to be able to put in the grant that they'd have a station at the high school between the baseball and softball field, middle school between the soccer field and the, and football field, that would be a part of this emergency system, that it's not a sirene as such.
And the reason why those two schools, of course, they are located in the city limits, yes.
Maybe, maybe, uh, in the future, a county fire department could apply for the grant or something, okay.
All right, so no action needed on the part of the board, so, next up, we have, uh, Budget Amendment one forty-one dash twenty-two-five dash twenty-one, Ms. Nelson.
So, this is just a, um, entry that's required by the state. So, it came late last year in the last school year and they didn't give it to us in time for us to get it in. So, what this, uh, budget amendment does is it records the, um, the amount that the state pays on behalf of us for, um, post-secondary testing and the students we have in the juvenile detention center. So, this is just basically a, um, entry that we're required to make. And so I have to record the revenue and rec- record the expenditure, so it's a net zero, it's just an entry that I have to, I have to do the budget amendment because I don't have the money, I don't have the money from these lines. And so, um, this is to take care of that.
All right.
It doesn't affect fund balance, obviously.
All right, I need a motion to approve Budget Amendment one forty-one dash twenty-two-five dash twenty-one.
I shall move.
Mr. Cordell, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion, questions for April? All right, let's see, um, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie is absent, uh, Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
And I will vote yes, that passes eight-two-zero. Item number nine, Budget Amendment, um, one forty-one, twenty-two-five dash twenty-two.
So, this is just some normal moving around of funds, um, we needed to increase our retiree dental vision, um, line to pay that we used to pay our, the portion of retirees dental vision out of. And then, um, we purchased some software, I needed to move funds in that line for. And then, um, our capital line was getting a little bit lower than I like to, to be when we go into summer because things could come up, large things could come up. And so, the, basically, there's no specific item that I'm putting in money in this line for. It's just to be able to cover some, um, if we have some huge emergency or a large item that comes up in the summer, um, to go ahead and move some funds to that capital line.
All right, I need a, um, a motion to approve Budget Amendment one forty-one dash twenty-two-five dash twenty-two.
I shall move.
Jones?
I second.
Mr. Cordell? Um, any discussion, questions for April? All right, uh, Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And that passes nine-two-zero. All right, Budget Amendment one forty-one dash twenty-two-five dash twenty-three.
And this is the budget amendment to take care of Mr. Hargrove's, um, June salary. So, we have to accrue that, that funds, um, the funds to pay him for the amount of, for the month of June. So, this is to move that, that funding into these lines, and it doesn't affect fund balance.
Do I have a motion to approve Budget Amendment one forty-one dash twenty-two-five dash twenty-three?
I shall move.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye. I'll second that.
Okay. Not your voting. All right, uh, Ms. Yinch?
I had a question.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones has a question.
I just had a question about the psychological personnel, uh, am I looking at the wrong budget?
No, that's the money I took, it's where I took the mon- the fund.
Okay, so you took it from that, okay, and moved it into the administration.
No, we didn't end up hiring that position this year, so I took the funds from that position to pay.
Okay, that was the next question I was gonna ask, so you did hire a, a person, not a contracted person, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're on number ten, right? That is, yeah, number ten, thanks. Did I say something else? It's always possible.
It should be, well, yeah.
All right, um-
Oh, you're right.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
That passes nine-two-zero, um, item number eleven, budget update. Back to you, Ms. Nelson.
This is the budget update for the month of April, and we received three-point-three million dollars in state revenue, six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in local, um, that brought us to ninety-point-two-three percent of, of total revenue received for the year, um, compared to year date of eighty-nine-point-six-six percent. Um, through April, we have spent, um, thirty-nine million of our expenditures, which brought us to the seventy-one-point-one-nine percent compared to last year, sixty-seven-point-seven-eight percent. Um, nothing, nothing really stands out, I think budget is on track. We will have, um, two mu- two more months, I'm sorry, three more months of expenditures to record, and then, um, three more months of revenue to record. But so far, the budget's on track, I'll take any additional question, or I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the budget updates. Anybody make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Now second.
Ms. Matthews, and-
I make them too fast, y'all make them.
Ms. Jones, all right. Any discussion questions for Ms. Nelson? How does it look like we're getting on, on track for, um, coming out on the positive side of things?
Uh, it looks like rev- revenues are pretty strong, our sales tax is really strong right now.
Okay.
I think we'll come out ahead on that, um, property tax, it says we collected around ninety-seven percent. Um, we're still having a little bit trickle-in, um, but it's getting little, so I don't know that we'll, we'll, um, meet our hundred percent of, of property tax, but sales tax is gonna make, make up for it, for sure.
Okay.
So, I do think we'll hit a hundred percent of revenues in total, we'll be very close to it.
All right. Any further questions for Ms. Nelson? All right, we vote to approve the budget update, Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews, or Ms. Matthews, geez, I don't like really losing it here, okay, Ms. Matthews?
Ms. Matthews votes aye.
Thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
And Ms. Ballard will vote aye. Nine-to-zero, all right. All right, so, now we move on to the meteor discussions, I guess. Um, item number twelve on our agenda is to discuss policy six-point-three-one-two on the cell phones. And you can bring that up, that is on our, on our list here somewhere, there it is. And, um, Mr. Coon, did you want to lead off the discussion on this? Or you had some questions, or?
Well, um, uh, I'll make a motion to approve it so that, you know, we can discuss.
All right, so, uh, yeah, motion to approve six-point-three-one-two made by Mr. Coon.
I second.
And Mr. Hansert, all right, discussion.
Um, I guess one of the biggest things I've got is, you know, you know, the, um, you know, we were talking about a complete ban of cell phones and now here we are, we're, you know, basically back to the same policy we had, so why are we even updating our policy? I mean, there's very little, there, there's very little, I mean, it's still up to, to the, you know, teachers and how it's used and, you know, the only thing I can say is on the, uh, you know, the disciplinary, you know, the offenses, you know, I mean, that's a little more spelled out, but other than that, I mean, why was everything gutted out of it? Why was the meat of the policy gutted out of it? That's, well, you know, I'm not on the policy committee, so I'm asking.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gillie?
All right, this policy, we spent two meetings in about eight hours, in two meetings, uh, principals, uh, a few people, I think Mr. Hansert stopped by one meeting, uh, for a little while. Basically, there's a, we did have a policy that was basically our policy since twenty-twelve was no cell phones, period. That's the way it was, didn't have any repercussions, didn't have any offenses, levels, none of that kind of stuff in it. After this eight hours, the consensus of the majority of the policy committee came back with more of an out-of-sight, out-of-mind approach, uh, with some stiff penalties. Uh, we had a lot of people in the policy committee meetings, uh, one of them being our district attorney general for one of them, sat through the session to explain a lot of the reasonings behind the out-of-sta- out-of-sight, out-of-mind theory, uh, when it comes to safety and things of that nature. Uh, we, we basically started with the modeled Warren County policy, and that's the reason you see a lot of things marked out because their policy actually violated law in a lot of places because they're in the process of having to even, even totally rebuild theirs as well. So, and, and, and the basics, we were having to engineer a new theory and a new policy to build off of and work with. And this is, everyone pretty well knew when we brought this recommendation to this board, that sets us something to work with and go from there. This gets us something that achieves the goal that even safety was after with an out-of-sight, out-of-mind, but also opens the doors for opportunity to where these, these kids, you're not getting into pouches, you're not getting into unlawful seizures, you're not getting into things of that nature. Uh, our policy committee meetings had, uh, the one that Mr., Mr. Northcott was there, there was quite a bit of information explaining when you get to that point of unlawful seizures and you start pushing it too long, getting into the things of that nature. So, uh, that was a lot, there was a lot of discussion on this, uh, you know, we, we still took out some things even from our, from our prior policy of, of where teachers are encouraged to integrate their phones into the curriculum, we took that out. So, we're not necessarily saying they can't have them in their, in their pockets, in their backpacks or whatever, but you've got stiff penalties if you bring them out. Because ninety-five percent of this policy and the reason the state come down on it and, and the law, it has to do with safety. Uh, we spent, I think, three hours on the fact of what is instructional time and what is it? Well, it doesn't really matter, but when you look at the safety aspects of things, instructional time or non-instructional time doesn't matter because if you allow kids to have their phone during non-instructional time, if it's interpreted to be in between classes or lunch, you're negating the fact of the security reasons of why you don't want them to have the phones in the first place, to be able to have that communication during the school day at school amongst each other. So, this was very, very complicated, and I think we did really well as a unanimous group, it was a, it was a full unanimous vote to bring what is here to this board to start with, is a great start.
I think, you know, I was on that committee also, and I haven't seen this since it was written up, but I don't think it's specific enough, uh, because like you said, we spent a long, long time hashing this out. And we finally got where there was a consensus of every principal on the first offense, second, third, and fourth offense, system-wide. So, that's very, to me, that was very important, that all parents and students know that this is what's gonna happen, you know, as consequences of having your phone during instructional time. But my thinking was that we, it, it says students may possess personal communication devices and personal electronic devices so long as they're turned off and stored in backpacks, purses, or personal carry-ons. So, that means that-
Out-of-sight, out-of-mind.
Every school, not lockers, because see-
They don't have lockers at every school, we went through that as well.
But there, the middle school did have lockers, and I know Mr. Anderson, it was, you know, he has his put in the lockers, so we've got to, we've got to make sure that-
Of tools, use, it was, remember, it was the consensus of tools, whatever tools you have at your school to keep them, it was an out-of-sight, out-of-mind basis.
Well, I'm kinda like Mr. Coon now, we've gone back- Well, I'm kinda like Mr. Coon now. We've gone back to just, to me, it should be the same across the board. I thought that's what we came up with. Because I know, I know the, every principal had their own rules that they were going by, and they said it wasn't an issue, but, but-
The middle school was the only one that was following the policy.
So, in other words, by this policy, Mr. Anderson, are you planning on having your students put them in the locker, or you, I mean, that, I think that needs to be, that needs to be hashed out if that's gonna be okay. Because that's, that's why I thought we had the meeting where everybody would know, parents would know exactly what, what their kids can do and what they can't.
So, it is in our handbook that students are to keep their backpacks and personal belongings in their lockers. They, they are allowed to carry their books and supplies that they need to class, but all their personal items need to stay in the locker for the day.
So, middle school's different, then they, they will not be able to have their phones during the day at lunch or between classes.
All of them are the same with this policy.
No, middle school has theirs, I mean, Rider Academy has theirs and high school does.
And they, they don't have lockers. I mean, the high school doesn't have, they have a few, but-
It doesn't matter whether they have lockers or not. It's, it's, it's not the same. You see what, you don't understand?
So, unless something's changed, your, your students are not allowed to have cellphones in the cafeteria during lunchtime, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, they don't-
Yeah, see, currently, no, they're all not the same.
Yeah.
But if the policy, if we set this policy and then we enforce this policy, then this is how it goes.
So, will they then be allowed cellphones in your cafeteria? If we're all-
No, ma'am.
No, because it still doesn't allow.
So, we're doing away with cellphones in all cafeterias?
Yes, this, this policy is system-wide.
Okay.
Ms. Jones?
Oh, I didn't realize the high school. Are you doing away with phones at the, in the cafeteria?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Well, I didn't think that we did. I thought that our consensus was that we were going with the high school and Rider Academies.
But that was when, that was Frida, Frida, that was when-
Did you agree with me?
Well, we, we had-
I was on that policy committee.
Frida, that was when the DA come in and explained that high school and Rider Academy is probably our two greatest areas that we need to mitigate those opportunities to have the phones.
So, in other words, we're voting tonight to take the phones away from students all day.
As, as I read the state law, yes.
Is that between classes?
And a high school student cannot get a phone out at lunch.
What about between classes?
Except emergency, I believe, just like the policy states right here, students may use a device in a health emergency or to manage their health. Then you get into the IEPs, five-oh-fours, individual learning plans in case of an emergency or possible emergency at child's school. They will do the notifications to the parents. I believe there is many things in this policy that allows the opportunities that they, I mean, obviously, you want them to be able to use them and use them, but at the free convenience of discussion and things of that nature during the day, that was pointed out in those policy meetings without getting into a safety meeting that was pointed out, many, many reasons as to why.
Okay, why would they, why would they even have them in their backpack if they're gonna be punished if they get them out? You see what I'm saying?
They might be riding the bus. They might get on them after the bus. I mean, there might be an emergency that day. They might be an athlete that is staying after school and need their phone to tell their parent that practice was over with earlier.
Well, they won't be able to tell during the school day. They can't have their phone out.
Well, you can go to the office like we've done and I've done when we were in school, and everybody grew up to, you can go to the office and make sure your parent gets a message.
Yeah.
I mean, on line twenty-seven, on line twenty-seven to twenty-eight, I would be okay with it if it says students may possess personal communication devices and personal electronic devices so long as such devices are turned off and stored in backpacks, purses, or personal carry-ons during instructional time. Because otherwise, we're banning phones, is what we're doing.
But you're negating the safety fact that I'm gonna, I'm gonna be personally an advocate, as you are, for the phones. I'm gonna be an advocate for the safety aspect because we were, we will negate the fact of what we're trying to achieve to cut out the connection, conversations, and things of that nature between the students that we have a lot of issues with that have been pointed out in those meetings between classes at lunch.
Okay, I would like to, you to speak to that because I thought you and, and, uh, that you weren't, you really didn't have a big issue at the high school.
Well, we have not had a significant number of, of referrals for violation of cellphone policy, and Ms. Sellers had stated the same thing. My understanding with this policy is that students will not be able to have their devices out for personal reasons. The new state law that goes into effect this summer, and I'm paraphrasing on this, states that students must be able to have access to their devices, or I'm sorry, teachers must be able to give access to student devices for instructional purposes. In other words, the classroom teacher could state specifically, we are, we are gonna use these devices for this activity today in class, but that must be an instructional activity. It, it couldn't, students couldn't just have their device out, just sitting on their desk, or, or things like that, or messaging. It would have to be for a specific instructional purpose as stated in, in the state law, which, and I know that the verbiage that has been created here does not, it's not the exact verbiage of the state law.
Yeah, the law, the law doesn't say must, it says can.
Are you okay with this?
Well, so, where I am, here's where, here's where I have a struggle.
Hold on a minute.
Here's where I have a struggle. We run into situations from time to time, for example, where students text message one another, and they, they end up getting into an argument or an altercation. Those kind of things that we don't want to happen in our school building, which do create safety issues. Where, where we're caught is in a perfect world, and I, I've said this over and over, ideally, I would like for my students to learn responsibility with their devices. But we do have students that struggle, and, and they're hard lessons for students. An example would be what, the, the one that I just gave. I mean, they're using their devices for, for things that are not instructional. They're not using them for positive purposes, and this is not all students by any means, but students definitely do this, leading to situations that we have at school involving safety, which I would like to avoid. But again, in a perfect world, I would like for my students to be able to learn responsibility with their devices. For instance, if there's, we've got lots of work-based learning students, particularly seniors at our school, and that number is increasing by the year based upon state laws with graduation requirements. And so, there are lots of work-based learning seniors. They leave school. Some of them will leave this year after second period. Some will leave after third, after fourth, and so on, seniors. Sometimes work schedules change. Sometimes, you know, a boss might say, well, hey, I need you to come in at four today instead of three-thirty. In a perfect world, a student could receive that message and know what they need to do while they're actually at school. I'm not opposed to that at all. What I am opposed to is the communication that tends to occur with some students leading to various safety issues and altercations and arguments and things like that. I'm caught in a quandary.
Mr. Chair?
So, I want to say one more thing.
Mr. Chair?
I want to say one more thing. To me, we're, we, we would be better off to say, you can't have it in your backpack or anywhere on you. Take them up. Because if a kid's got a phone on them, you're gonna have problems with kids pulling them out and sneaking and trying to use their phone. I mean, if we're gonna do this, they don't even need the phone on them. If they're gonna get punished because, you know, there's offenses starting with the first offense, and we're gonna have a bigger problem with that than we are now if they've got them on, in their possession, is what I'm saying. If we're gonna go this route with them in their purses, in their backpack, or they can't get to them. I just see an issue with it if they've got them on their purse and if they can't use them. It would be hard for me not to pull my phone out if I had it on me.
I do agree that we're gonna have students that struggle with abiding by the policy. I, I agree. I mean, I, you know, so many adults, I mean, I, I speak for myself. You know, we have habits, you know, we, we receive personal messages during the day, and when we get a break for a moment, we check that. And again, in a, in a perfect world, I would like for my students to learn responsibility and checking messages when it's a convenient time. When they're not receiving instruction in class, we just, we have the struggles with students being responsible, with so many of them, and again, not all students at all.
So, you've had altercations because of the phones, is that correct?
That does occur. It does occur.
How often does that occur?
Um, I would not, and I would need to go back and look at data to see, to see the specific number. I would not say a lot, but I would say definitely over the last few years with devices, I, I feel like, I feel like we had several this past school year. I will say that. Those don't always manifest themselves with physical altercations, but, but arguments and things that administrators are intervening with through discussion in the office and things like that, in conversations with parents and those students.
Mr. Chair, can we, can we ask, can we pause the video just for a second? I'm not gonna get into in-depth and some safety things, but I think this board needs to hear just how easy and how vulnerable these cellphones are in our schools.
Mr. David Littles?
Ms. Jane Wood-Littles.[96.84][97.11](end of transcript)[99.11][99.13](end of transcript)[101.13][101.15](end of transcript)[103.15][103.17](end of transcript)[105.17][105.19](end of transcript)[107.19][107.21](end of transcript)[109.21][109.23](end of transcript)[111.23][111.25](end of transcript)[113.25][113.27](end of transcript)[115.27][115.29](end of transcript)[117.29][117.31](end of transcript)[119.31][119.33](end of transcript)[121.33][121.35](end of transcript)[123.35][123.37](end of transcript)[125.37][125.39](end of transcript)[127.39][127.41](end of transcript)[129.41][129.43](end of transcript)[131.43][131.45](end of transcript)[133.45][133.47](end of transcript)[135.47][135.49](end of transcript)[137.49][137.51](end of transcript)[139.51][139.53](end of transcript)[141.53][141.55](end of transcript)[143.55][143.57](end of transcript)[145.57][145.59](end of transcript)[147.59][147.61](end of transcript)[149.61][149.63](end of transcript)[151.63][151.65](end of transcript)[153.65][153.67](end of transcript)[155.67][155.69](end of transcript)[157.69][157.71](end of transcript)[159.71][159.73](end of transcript)[161.73][161.75](end of transcript)[163.75][163.77](end of transcript)[165.77][165.79](end of transcript)[167.79][167.81](end of transcript)[169.81][169.83](end of transcript)[171.83][171.85](end of transcript)[173.85][173.87](end of transcript)[175.87][175.89](end of transcript)[177.89][177.91](end of transcript)[179.91][179.93](end of transcript)[181.93][181.95](end of transcript)[183.95][183.97](end of transcript)[185.97][185.99](end of transcript)[187.99][188.01](end of transcript)[190.01][190.03](end of transcript)[192.03][192.05](end of transcript)[194.05][194.07](end of transcript)[196.07][196.09](end of transcript)[198.09][198.11](end of transcript)[200.11][200.13](end of transcript)[202.13][202.15](end of transcript)[204.15][204.17](end of transcript)[206.17][206.19](end of transcript)[208.19][208.21](end of transcript)[210.21][210.23](end of transcript)[212.23][212.25](end of transcript)[214.25][214.27](end of transcript)[216.27][216.29](end of transcript)[218.29][218.31](end of transcript)[220.31][220.33](end of transcript)[222.33][222.35](end of transcript)[224.35][224.37](end of transcript)[226.37][226.39](end of transcript)[228.39][228.41](end of transcript)[230.41][230.43](end of transcript)[232.43][232.45](end of transcript)[234.45][234.47](end of transcript)[236.47][236.49](end of transcript)[238.49][238.51](end of transcript)[240.51][240.53](end of transcript)[242.53][242.55](end of transcript)[244.55][244.57](end of transcript)[246.57][246.59](end of transcript)[248.59][248.61](end of transcript)[250.61][250.63](end of transcript)[252.63][252.65](end of transcript)[254.65][254.67](end of transcript)[256.67][256.69](end of transcript)[258.69][258.71](end of transcript)[260.71][260.73](end of transcript)[262.73][262.75](end of transcript)[264.75][264.77](end of transcript)[266.77][266.79](end of transcript)[268.79][268.81](end of transcript)[270.81][270.83](end of transcript)[272.83][272.85](end of transcript)[274.85][274.87](end of transcript)[276.87][276.89](end of transcript)[278.89][278.91](end of transcript)[280.91][280.93](end of transcript)[282.93][282.95](end of transcript)[284.95][284.97](end of transcript)[286.97][286.99](end of transcript)[288.99][289.01](end of transcript)[291.01][291.03](end of transcript)[293.03][293.05](end of transcript)[295.05][295.07](end of transcript)[297.07][297.09](end of transcript)[299.09][299.11](end of transcript)[301.11][301.13](end of transcript)[303.13][303.15](end of transcript)[305.15][305.17](end of transcript)[307.17][307.19](end of transcript)[309.19][309.21](end of transcript)[311.21][311.23](end of transcript)[313.23][313.25](end of transcript)[315.25][315.27](end of transcript)[317.27][317.29](end of transcript)[319.29][319.31](end of transcript)[321.31][321.33](end of transcript)[323.33][323.35](end of transcript)[325.35][325.37](end of transcript)[327.37][327.39](end of transcript)[329.39][329.41](end of transcript)[331.41][331.43](end of transcript)[333.43][333.45](end of transcript)[335.45][335.47](end of transcript)[337.47][337.49](end of transcript)[339.49][339.51](end of transcript)[341.51][341.53](end of transcript)[343.53][343.55](end of transcript)[345.55][345.57](end of transcript)[347.57][347.59](end of transcript)[349.59][349.61](end of transcript)[351.61][351.63](end of transcript)[353.63][353.65](end of transcript)[355.65][355.67](end of transcript)[357.67][357.69](end of transcript)[359.69][359.71](end of transcript)[361.71][361.73](end of transcript)[363.73][363.75](end of transcript)[365.75][365.77](end of transcript)[367.77][367.79](end of transcript)[369.79][369.81](end of transcript)[371.81][371.83](end of transcript)[373.83][373.85](end of transcript)[375.85][375.87](end of transcript)[377.87][377.89](end of transcript)[379.89][379.91](end of transcript)[381.91][381.93](end of transcript)[383.93][383.95](end of transcript)[385.95][385.97](end of transcript)[387.97][387.99](end of transcript)[389.99][389.99](end of transcript)[391.99][392.01](end of transcript)[394.01][394.03](end of transcript)[396.03][396.05](end of transcript)[398.05][398.07](end of transcript)[400.07][400.09](end of transcript)[402.09][402.11](end of transcript)[404.11][404.13](end of transcript)[406.13][406.15](end of transcript)[408.15][408.17](end of transcript)[410.17][410.19](end of transcript)[412.19][412.21](end of transcript)[414.21][414.23](end of transcript)[416.23][416.25](end of transcript)[418.25][418.27](end of transcript)[420.27][420.29](end of transcript)[422.29][422.31](end of transcript)[424.31][424.33](end of transcript)[426.33][426.35](end of transcript)[428.35][428.37](end of transcript)[430.37][430.39](end of transcript)[432.39][432.41](end of transcript)[434.41][434.43](end of transcript)[436.43][436.45](end of transcript)[438.45][438.47](end of transcript)[440.47][440.49](end of transcript)[442.49][442.51](end of transcript)[444.51][444.53](end of transcript)[446.53][446.55](end of transcript)[448.55][448.57](end of transcript)[450.57][450.59](end of transcript)[452.59][452.61](end of transcript)[454.61][454.63](end of transcript)[456.63][456.65](end of transcript)[458.65][458.67](end of transcript)[460.67][460.69](end of transcript)[462.69][462.71](end of transcript)[464.71][464.73](end of transcript)[466.73][466.75](end of transcript)[468.75][468.77](end of transcript)[470.77][470.79](end of transcript)[472.79][472.81](end of transcript)[474.81][474.83](end of transcript)[476.83][476.85](end of transcript)[478.85][478.87](end of transcript)[480.87][480.89](end of transcript)[482.89][482.91](end of transcript)[484.91][484.93](end of transcript)[486.93][486.95](end of transcript)[488.95][488.97](end of transcript)[490.97][490.99](end of transcript)[492.99][493.01](end of transcript)[495.01][495.03](end of transcript)[497.03][497.05](end of transcript)[499.05][499.07](end of transcript)[501.07][501.09](end of transcript)[503.09][503.11](end of transcript)[505.11][505.13](end of transcript)[507.13][507.15](end of transcript)[509.15][509.17](end of transcript)[511.17][511.19](end of transcript)[513.19][513.21](end of transcript)[515.21][515.23](end of transcript)[517.23][517.25](end of transcript)[519.25][519.27](end of transcript)[521.27][521.29](end of transcript)[523.29][523.31](end of transcript)[525.31][525.33](end of transcript)[527.33][527.35](end of transcript)[529.35][529.37](end of transcript)[531.37][531.39](end of transcript)[533.39][533.41](end of transcript)[535.41][535.42](end of transcript)[537.42][537.44](end of transcript)[539.44][539.46](end of transcript)[541.46][541.48](end of transcript)[543.48][543.50](end of transcript)[545.50][545.52](end of transcript)[547.52][547.54](end of transcript)[549.54][549.55](end of transcript)[551.55][551.57](end of transcript)[553.57][553.59](end of transcript)[555.59][555.61](end of transcript)[557.61][557.63](end of transcript)[559.63][559.65](end of transcript)[561.65][561.67](end of transcript)[563.67][563.69](end of transcript)[565.69][565.71](end of transcript)[567.71][567.73](end of transcript)[569.73][569.75](end of transcript)[571.75][571.77](end of transcript)[573.77][573.79](end of transcript)[575.79][575.81](end of transcript)[577.81][577.83](end of transcript)[579.83][579.85](end of transcript)[581.85][581.87](end of transcript)[583.87][583.89](end of transcript)[585.89][585.91](end of transcript)[587.91][587.92](end of transcript)[589.92][589.94](end of transcript)[591.94][591.96](end of transcript)[593.96][593.98](end of transcript)[595.98][595.99](end of transcript)[597.99][598.01](end of transcript)[600.01][600.03](end of transcript)[602.03][602.04](end of transcript)[604.04][604.05](end of transcript)[606.05][606.07](end of transcript)[608.07][608.09](end of transcript)[610.09][610.11](end of transcript)[612.11][612.13](end of transcript)[614.13][614.15](end of transcript)[616.15][616.17](end of transcript)[618.17][618.19](end of transcript)[620.19][620.21](end of transcript)[622.21][622.23](end of transcript)[624.23][624.25](end of transcript)[626.25][626.27](end of transcript)[628.27][628.29](end of transcript)[630.29][630.31](end of transcript)[632.31][632.33](end of transcript)[634.33][634.35](end of transcript)[636.35][636.37](end of transcript)[638.37][638.39](end of transcript)[640.39][640.41](end of transcript)[642.41][642.42](end of transcript)[644.42][644.44](end of transcript)[646.44][646.46](end of transcript)[648.46][648.48](end of transcript)[650.48][650.50](end of transcript)[652.50][652.52](end of transcript)[654.52][654.54](end of transcript)[656.54][656.56](end of transcript)[658.56][658.58](end of transcript)[660.58][660.60](end of transcript)[662.60][662.62](end of transcript)[664.62][664.64](end of transcript)[666.64][666.66](end of transcript)[668.66][668.68](end of transcript)[670.68][670.70](end of transcript)[672.70][672.72](end of transcript)[674.72][674.74](end of transcript)[676.74][676.76](end of transcript)[678.76][678.78](end of transcript)[680.78][680.80](end of transcript)[682.80][682.82](end of transcript)[684.82][684.84](end of transcript)[686.84][686.86](end of transcript)[688.86][688.88](end of transcript)[690.88][690.90](end of transcript)[692.90][692.92](end of transcript)[694.92][694.94](end of transcript)[696.94][696.96](end of transcript)[698.96][698.98](end of transcript)[700.98][700.99](end of transcript)[702.99][703.01](end of transcript)[705.01][705.03](end of transcript)[707.03][707.05](end of transcript)[709.05][709.07](end of transcript)[711.07][711.09](end of transcript)[713.09][713.11](end of transcript)[715.11][715.13](end of transcript)[717.13][717.15](end of transcript)[719.15][719.17](end of transcript)[721.17][721.19](end of transcript)[723.19][723.21](end of transcript)[725.21][725.23](end of transcript)[727.23][727.25](end of transcript)[729.25][729.27](end of transcript)[731.27][731.29](end of transcript)[733.29][733.31](end of transcript)[735.31][735.33](end of transcript)[737.33][737.35](end of transcript)[739.35][739.37](end of transcript)[741.37][741.39](end of transcript)[743.39][743.41](end of transcript)[745.41][745.43](end of transcript)[747.43][747.45](end of transcript)[749.45][749.47](end of transcript)[751.47][751.49](end of transcript)[753.49][753.51](end of transcript)[755.51][755.53](end of transcript)[757.53][757.55](end of transcript)[759.55][759.57](end of transcript)[761.57][761.59](end of transcript)[763.59][763.61](end of transcript)[765.61][765.63](end of transcript)[767.63][767.65](end of transcript)[769.65][769.67](end of transcript)[771.67][771.69](end of transcript)[773.69][773.71](end of transcript)[775.71][775.73](end of transcript)[777.73][777.75](end of transcript)[779.75][779.77](end of transcript)[781.77][781.79](end of transcript)[783.79][783.81](end of transcript)[785.81][785.83](end of transcript)[787.83][787.85](end of transcript)[789.85][789.87](end of transcript)[791.87][791.89](end of transcript)[793.89][793.91](end of transcript)[795.91][795.93](end of transcript)[797.93][797.95](end of transcript)[799.95][799.97](end of transcript)[801.97][801.99](end of transcript)[803.99][804.01](end of transcript)[806.01][806.03](end of transcript)[808.03][808.05](end of transcript)[810.05][810.07](end of transcript)[812.07][812.09](end of transcript)[814.09][814.11](end of transcript)[816.11][816.13](end of transcript)[818.13][818.15](end of transcript)[820.15][820.17](end of transcript)[822.17][822.19](end of transcript)[824.19][824.21](end of transcript)[826.21][826.23](end of transcript)[828.23][828.25](end of transcript)[830.25][830.27](end of transcript)[832.27][832.29](end of transcript)[834.29][834.31](end of transcript)[836.31][836.33](end of transcript)[838.33][838.35](end of transcript)[840.35][840.37](end of transcript)[842.37][842.39](end of transcript)[844.39][844.41](end of transcript)[846.41][846.43](end of transcript)[848.43][848.45](end of transcript)[850.45][850.47](end of transcript)[852.47][852.49](end of transcript)[854.49][854.51](end of transcript)[856.51][856.53](end of transcript)[858.53][858.55](end of transcript)[860.55][860.57](end of transcript)[862.57][862.59](end of transcript)[864.59][864.61](end of transcript)[866.61][866.63](end of transcript)[868.63][868.65](end of transcript)[870.65][870.67](end of transcript)[872.67][872.69](end of transcript)[874.69][874.71](end of transcript)[876.71][876.73](end of transcript)[878.73][878.75](end of transcript)[880.75][880.77](end of transcript)[882.77][882.79](end of transcript)[884.79][884.81](end of transcript)[886.81][886.83](end of transcript)[888.83][888.85](end of transcript)[890.85][890.87](end of transcript)[892.87][892.89](end of transcript)[894.89][894.91](end of transcript)[896.91][896.93](end of transcript)[898.93][898.95](end of transcript)[900.95][900.97](end of transcript)[902.97][902.99](end of transcript)[904.99][905.01](end of transcript)[907.01][907.03](end of transcript)[909.03][909.05](end of transcript)[911.05][911.07](end of transcript)[913.07][913.09](end of transcript)[915.09][915.11](end of transcript)[917.11][917.13](end of transcript)[919.13][919.15](end of transcript)[921.15][921.17](end of transcript)[923.17][923.19](end of transcript)[925.19][925.21](end of transcript)[927.21][927.23](end of transcript)[929.23][929.25](end of transcript)[931.25][931.27](end of transcript)[933.27][933.29](end of transcript)[935.29][935.31](end of transcript) All right. We are back on the record, so... We have a motion on the floor to approve this policy. Do we have further discussion?
I, I have a couple more questions, I'm sorry. I don't mean to drag this out.
Okay. No, no, go ahead.
But I, I don't see anything in this policy addressing teacher usage of cellphone. We have this expectation for our students. What is the expectation of our teachers?
I think, I think, Mr., I think we just asked, asked that question, right?
Well, that's my thing is, you know, even with, you know, I, I've talked to several schools about this, you know, through, Mr. Cope, and, uh, if we don't have a policy for the teachers, implementing this stuff, I mean...
I thought you were talking about implementing it towards the rules to the kids. I'm talking about, yeah, I, I'm talking about, um, teachers using their cellphones during instruction time. I thought that was different than what you were...
No, well, teachers altogether, I mean, in, in, in general, what, we don't have no, nothing in here for the teachers, discipline whatsoever, whether they're using them or...
Oh, okay.
I mean, that, that applies to that, Ms. Matthews, I mean...
Ms. Chair, I'm sorry, I did, I thought you were done, Mr. Hanser, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. I, I think as part of the MOU that teachers are allowed to keep their device, uh, that you voted on, uh, last week or last month, that was part of it, was for teachers to be able to continue to keep their device, is that right? Mr. Dr. Pope? So, and then also the other part that Mr. Hanser brought up about the discipline as far as, of a teacher for not following the policy, that's the job of the principal to take care of. Anytime that they are not following any of the policies, then it's, it's the job of the principal to bring them in and deal with that accordingly at that time. Uh, and, and that's any of our policies. The principal has to take care of it if, if something's not being followed.
And you still have the MOU, just like you described, because we went over that for about two hours. And the policy, so all of this was had to, ugh.
Is there something in here that specifically addresses, yes, that the devices are turned off? My question is, how do you, you can't make a kid turn a phone off. I mean, how, how would you?
Turn it off or take it up.
But, but...
I do that at my work.
I'll, I'll just say, you know, I feel like Mr. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, at the middle school, has done a fantastic job with his cellphone policy. I feel like it, um, it, it took care of a lot of issues. And I think your policy is that the, the phone now, you know, cannot be on you or you can't have it out, it can't be seen, correct? But, has to be in the locker or it can't be, you know, and so, but you all don't look to see if the phone is turned off, correct? I mean, unless there's a reason to, I guess.
Unless there's a reason.
So we can't make the students turn the phones off. I guess if they get caught with it, and it's on, but it's really not even our...
And Mr. Anderson's policy is lines 27 through 32 is Mr. Anderson's policy.
Exactly. And, and my point is, you give a kid a candy bar and they're carrying it around in their pocket or their purse or their backpack, tell them they can't eat it till the end of the day. That's the same thing as with a cellphone. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tempting to pull that phone out during the day, and I, I just say we're gonna have more issues. You either do away with them and not have them all in with them, because I can see that the high school, I, with all those kids out there, I don't see how you could go through a day without a child pulling their phone out and trying to text someone. And then they're gonna get caught, and then you're gonna go through all this, these steps. I mean, to me, we need to go one or the other, and, oh.
Well, at the first of the year, you're gonna have a whole lot of phones taken up, and hopefully by the end of the year that they've learned, you know, that, you know, they can't do it and, you know, and, you know, it'll be ingrained in them moving forward. And that's gonna be the key, is that it, this has to be followed to the letter from day one by all schools and all teachers that, you know, if not, it don't work.
And they gotta have support.
Right.
From administration, teachers have gotta have it from principals, principals gotta have it from administrators, and they gotta have it from board.
George.
And as long as there aren't students that are allowed to use theirs, like, I mean, okay, let's just say, for instance, athletes, they're, they're always having to use their cellphones to tell parents, do this, do that. If we're not allowing them to use them, uh, is that correct? That, I mean, I don't think there should be any discrimination. And, and I'm grandparent of athlete, and, oh, you know, I understand that parents would want those children to be, have, have access to their phone, especially during the end of the day. Oh, I just, I, I know this is such a, a hard issue to, to talk about.
I can make a bunch of excuses, but I mean, my child calls, my, my, my child calls me from the office, goes to the, the, at, at middle school to let me know if there was a schedule change, or my phone beeps and it was the coach that sent a reminds, we're not gonna start practice, or we're not gonna, we're not gonna go to five, we're gonna cut it off at four thirty today. I mean, I get those reminds constantly from the coach and stuff, but...
How do you get in touch with her?
Uh, if I need to, I'll call the school, but otherwise she's called me from the school number.
I just wanna say that, um, I feel like, I, this is a hard one. I have laid awake at night so many nights, going back and forth and back and forth. Um, but I feel like, you know, it is our goal as a school system, as educators, to help develop and prepare our students to become responsible, dependable adults who can, when they get done with 12th grade, and then hopefully secondary school after that, college, that they are trained to, um, to know when it's appropriate and when it is not appropriate to use a cellphone. Um, and banning phones, taking them completely away, what are we really do, is it a control thing? You know, what are we, what are we doing here? What, are, are we encouraging them to use the phones responsibly? Or are we just banning and saying, no phones allowed, no phones allowed? So then when you get out of school and you start college and you're in class with your phone, you know, you hadn't been able to do that so far, so you're just wearing it out over there with your phone because they were banned in high school. I just feel like it is our job to, um, help students grow, to learn to be responsible enough to make that decision in, instead of telling them what they can and can't do, encourage them to learn how to think, not what to think. I, I just feel like this is an overreach. I feel like it's overstepping. And especially with safety concerns or the part about managing health, I need some clarification on a student may use device in a health emergency or to manage health. Does that mean if a student begins to feel sick at school, that he or she can bypass the nurse and just contact their parent on their cellphone? I don't see a problem with that.
I think it would go more toward the management of their health would be like if they're diabetic and they have...
That's what I was gonna ask for clarification on.
Check with.
Yes. Is this some kind of health app that we're talking about using? Or is this mean that little Johnny feels like he's gonna throw up any second, and so he decides to get his phone out and text his daddy to come get him before he does it all over the classroom? I don't see a problem with that. I'd, I'd encourage little Johnny to go ahead and do that. And I think the janitor would too. So that manage their health, you can interpret that in a, in, in a number of ways. And I think it'd be completely okay for a student to pull out their phone and text a parent or whoever to say, I don't feel well and I think I need to come home. My opinion.
Ms. Matthews, what that law or what that regulation be, if it's part of their health plan, like something like a,
Yeah.
501, 504, 504, then that would, that's where that would have to come.
Like it said, like it says in the policy before us. Ms. Chair, the, the law, law, law dictates not feelings.
As a, as a parent, I want to be able to communicate with my child if it's absolutely necessary. Do I want to distract her from, from anything as far as her learning goes? Absolutely not, never. Would I want her to text me needlessly? No. But if she needed something, if I needed something that I felt like could not wait until after school, I, I want to be able to communicate. And I think most all parents feel that way.
Then advocate to the state legislature and change the law.
Well, I'm, I'm a hundred percent, I'm, I go along with state legislature. I'm a hundred percent against cellphones during instructional time while they're in the classroom. They do not need to be out, and they should be punished and punished harshly for having those phones out. I think that's where our punishments needs to start. And, uh, at lunch, I think that is a disservice to particularly high school or maybe even middle school kids that they can't have their phone. And, uh, maybe I'm too lenient, but I'm a hundred percent against it for instructional time. I, I mean, I think that's a no-brainer.
Yes, I'm with you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve the policy. 6.312. Do we have any further discussion? If not, we can go to vote.
Did we determine, uh, instructional time? If there is instructional time, I know there have been times when, say, a teacher is done lecturing, there's no more instructional time going on for the rest of the class, they've got 10 extra minutes before the bell rings. Is it okay for a teacher to say, if you got, you've got some free time, you can pull your phone out? No? Yes? I know we have teachers who have allowed that.
And we were waiting on TSBA to get back with us on that, weren't we?
So we don't know that yet.
So we don't.
So, so this is a new, this has just come down. This is a new law that's going into effect. So that's why we're having to make this. So even though Warren County said that they had already enforced it, it's something new. Um, Ms. Cole sent me a one from Franklin County today where they've already got the model policy. And this is what it says, "Students may possess wireless communication devices so long as such devices are turned off and stored." And it has two options here. And you can choose during instructional time or two for the entirety of the school day. So, and then that, it goes on, "Such devices include any portable wireless devices that has the capability to provide voice messaging or any other data communication between two or more parties, such as wearable technology, cellphones, laptops, tablets, and gaming devices." And it goes on down, and I think it's pretty much in line. There is penalties and, it says, "Emergency, in the event of emergency, a possible emergency occurring at the school, parents and guardians shall be alerted by," and I think on ours, what did we put, school messenger? So, I mean, the, it's, this is just coming down. This is just passed.
But that, you go back to the instructional time? So that shows you there's a difference between instructional, instructional time and the day. Because there, all day is not instructional time.
Well, right, and, and a teacher would say, I was done with instructional time. We had 10 minutes left. I was done. It was okay for them to...
But she shouldn't be doing that.
I know, but, but it has happened. It has happened, and I know.
No, it's all okay. We gotta let them do that. We gotta let them do those things in non-instructional time.
But now, that, that is not non-instructional time. If a class period lasted an hour, that hour is instructional time, whether that teacher's saying whatever. They're supposed to be instructing. That's, that's a no-brainer there. But what I'm saying is, I ha, I, I agree with this policy, except the part where, uh... But what I'm saying is, I ha- I, I agree with this policy, except the part where, uh, lunch. I just, I just think we're going a little bit too far, but that's just me. So, I mean, that would be a time that a child could say, look, you know, this is changed. I've got to do this. Or, or even just for downtime.
Right.
But unfortunately, you'll have the few that will use that time, and that's where the whole safety concern comes in too.
But they're, they've still got them. Somebody that's intent on doing something bad, just because we're telling them they can't get out of their backpack. That, that is, they're not paying attention to that.
The students can also email back and forth all day long on their laptops or their Chromebooks. And they can communicate that way if they want to get something.
I'll let you have the final comment.
If y'all, if y'all remember Mr. Cope when he come down here, if you remember some of the power slides that he went through, the most potent time that things happened to cause conflict was at lunch and in between classes. If y'all will remember that, and he's got the data to prove it. That's whenever not to, you know, I mean, he had a whole lot of data down here that day, and it's hard to soak it all up, but that was your most, most of your problems that occurred was between lunch, it was between, you know, classrooms and, and lunch breaks and bathroom time. You know, they, they had a picture of a, someone took a picture, I think I've said this one before, someone took a picture of a, of a lady sitting on a commode. You know, it's just stuff that happens, but, uh.
All right.
It's, it's a hard decision.
Our, our, our students that are more likely to have cellphones. Well, I'm sorry, I've got something else I'm gonna say. Um, our, our principals that have the majority of the kids, um, that have cellphones, that have possession of cellphones, have both stated that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parsley, that it is not a huge issue. If, if I'm wrong, please correct me. I feel like our Raider Academy and our high school are not seeing major issues with the kids having the cellphones at lunch or between classes. Obviously, if it's a distraction in class, that's not good, but that's where the, the meat of the problem would lie, and they both said they, they really, please correct me, don't have a lot of issues with it. And I don't know if Mr. Anderson does or not, but I feel like his policy at the middle school has been extremely effective so far. I'll let you speak to that.
I'm not, I won't suggest at all that I'm disagreeing with what you've just said. Um, I think one thing of note, um, our students are not supposed to have their devices out during instructional time. They're not supposed to be disrupting class during instructional time. We do not receive a lot of referrals, um, teacher referrals to administrators as a result of breaking that policy. Now, I'm not at all suggesting it doesn't happen.
Right.
It is frustrating, uh, to teachers. Um, you know, sometimes they receive, uh, students receive, you know, that sometimes receive message from a parent while they're instructing. Well, the, the kid may have their phone out and they're, they're trying to respond, or vice versa.
Right.
Um, as far as checking their phones for an email or a text message between classes or during lunch, our students for many years have been able to do that. So we, we are not getting referrals during that time period because it's been allowed.
Allowed.
Uh, so, so I mean, I guess in a nutshell, we're not getting a lot of referrals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that doesn't mean there's not a problem during class, for sure.
Right.
Uh, and, and there are, there are issues that result, you know, whether it's messaging during class or whether it's messaging between classes where, you know, s- students might meet up and be in an argument or messages are sent and, and there may be something that happens after school, and then we're hearing about it the next day. Uh, those ongoing things. Now, I, I would say this as well. Um, I think definitely the electronic devices contribute to that. Um, but I think I would also be foolish to say that none of that would happen if the devices weren't here because.
It absolutely happened before we even had cellphones. Communication was going on for those type things.
But this policy, lines twenty seven through thirty two, have been in place since two thousand and twelve.
All right. Mr. Gillies has called.
And we're at that point, and those points.
Do I have a second?
Apparently it don't matter.
I'm sorry, but called a question is a way to silence people and, and.
Because I'd like to go home after three days of the same thing, the same stuff.
I understand, but.
We spent two meetings and eight hours on this that everyone was invited to and encouraged to attend.
I'm not on the policy committee, nevertheless.
Mr. Hanser came and spoke very well.
That we respect each other. That's all I have to say, and I call the question.
Well, I ain't done talking. I got something else I wanna say.
Well, okay.
That's how easy it is.
All right. We have two called a questions, so, uh. So, uh, Ms. Matthews calls the question.
We have to deal with Ms. Gillies first.
I'll resc- I'll rescind mine.
I think we drew ears when he started to talk, so. Yes. Yeah. A second on Mr. Gillies' call to question. Is it Mr. Gillies or Ms. Matthews?
I rescinded mine. It's Ms. Matthews. She needs a second.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right.
And it's debatable.
All right, uh, Ms. Cordell.
I'm so glad we are learning procedure.
Ms. Cordell, call the question.
We're voting.
We're voting on call the question.
Uh. Me?
Uh. Mr. Coon.
Uh.
Ms. Matthews. You okay down there? Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
And Mr. Hanser.
Uh.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
I will vote aye. That is nine to zero to end the debate, so we will move to a vote on this particular policy. Um, and I believe that, uh, Mr. Gillies first.
Uh, on the original motion to approve, aye.
All right. That is, we're back to the original motion. We eliminated the debate. Now we're voting on the policy itself. Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
No.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
I wanna explain what I'm doing. I was on that committee, and I apologize for not reading this prior, I did not see it when it came out. I would vote aye if it said students may possess personal communication devices and personal electronic devices so long as such devices are turned off and stored in backpacks, purses, or personal carry-ons during instructional time. I'd say aye. But it's not in there, so I'm saying no.
That is a no. Mr. Hanser on the policy.
Aye.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Uh.
I will vote aye. That passes, uh, seven to two. All right. That was a healthy debate.
I think that Holly and Freedom put up a good fight, and I appreciate you like.
Well, I just, I hope that it works well at the high school.
Everything, everybody needs to remember, this is just starting our base. Every one of these are amendable at any moment.
That is true.
Any one of them.
That's true.
This just gets us something started.
I'm supporting it, so.
Po- policy four point two one four, artificial intelligence policy, Mr. Daywood.
Oh, I, I, I don't have anything to say. I, I mean.
Okay. I know this kinda feeds into your R U P policy, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to.
Well, I mean, I don't know what the issue is.
Okay.
Four point two one four.
Somebody requested this, this be pulled up.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. That was me.
Oh, that was you? Okay. Um, so I, I guess to get discussion going, I would need a, a motion to approve the policy, I guess, four point two one four. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Mr. Hanser? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodge. All right. All right, discussion.
Okay, um, so, reading over the policy, um, I feel like it's inadequate. Where did the policy come from? Is this something that T S B A provided?
This is, this is very much based off the, the model policy.
That T S B A provided, correct. Okay, all right. So I guess my issue with it is, I feel like it's inadequate, um, and may, may possibly, I mean, my, um, I guess i- in that case, I would think maybe it would need to be kicked back to committee to make some modifications. Um, so really, I feel like it doesn't address the teacher use of A I in regard to instruction. Um, I know it, there's, there's a part on here, uh, line twenty one, ethical use staff. But I feel like it really is very vague in there. Um, for example, should or should not, should a teacher not use A I when grading, when grading? And I don't feel like, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I've missed it, I don't see where that's really addressed in here as far as grading or assessing students' work. And I know that that, that has happened. It does happen. Teachers are using A I to grade. And I guess, um, that I can see where that would be very helpful and efficient and time-saving for a teacher who might be grading a multiple choice quiz or maybe even a math paper. But there are instances where E L A teachers have used A I to grade essays and composition type work. And I just, I feel like, um, that this doesn't address that. I don't see how you could use A I to, to grade an essay without looking at the essay, um, or the writing. Or any, I think that would go for art or anything in humanities. Um, maybe I've missed it.
You do have, you do have some lines in there that are, I mean, like, I, I understand what you're saying, singling out certain ones and, and in-depth things, but I mean, staff is still expected to model ethical and responsible A I use.
That's really vague.
They also, staff must disclose their use of A I when required, including situations where failure to do so would violate A I's tools.
That, that's, that's based on the, the company's rules, not ours. I, I, I do not disagree with you at all, and.
You do have some in the M O U as well. Do you not have something about you being able to use A I and things in those circumstances?
I don't remember that.
I don't remember that.
Is it not in there? Okay. There was somewhere, it was, it was either in that or the, uh, well, what's the next one?
I don't remember that being in the M O U.
Well, neither.
The R U P.
R O U.
Well, if that's the case, then teachers are, are.
They're, they're working themselves out of jobs, right.
If they're just gonna use A I to grade everything.
Especially for writing. And I want to say that E L A, teaching E L A is a bit of a different animal, I would think, than some of the other subjects, maybe even arts or humanities fall in that category as well. Where you, it's just not cut and dry. Grading is not cut and dry. As an E L A teacher, you would want to be able to read through that student's work and understand, getting to know the student helps you understand their writing style. And I, I feel like it's up to us as a board to create a policy that makes sure that, um, the education for the child is not sacrificed for the efficiency or convenience of use of A I.
Totally agree. Totally agree.
Um.
Would that be in proprietary or confidential work?
No, that's not, not, I don't think so. I don't know, would, would it be possible to, I mean, I think we could come up with a line that would cover that pretty, pretty readily here, and then we could move forward.
Right. I just couldn't find it.
You could do it right here without.
We don't have to go through the committee, do we?
Right. You can do that right here.
The committee's here, right? Well.
Right here in amendment, and then interjecting a line, and it still passes first and final.
If you look under the ethical use of staff in that little section, the part I have is not numbered. I, I'm, 'cause I'm using my R U P, which is just a copy of that, so I don't know what number line we're talking about. Oh, thank you. So, um, so on line twenty four, after, or analyzing data, teachers may not use A I to grade.
Yeah.
Subjective works.
That's on the right track. Anything that could be graded subjectively.
That, that would cover, would that not cover pretty much everything at that point in time?
Yeah. It ne- needs a human to look at it and assess it.
Principals, does that sound reasonable to you, or?
Now.
The, 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 of course, you could gr- if you were grading for spelling, obviously A I could grade that.
Right.
We're talking about the content of subjective material.
Yeah, composition, writing. I don't see how you can effectively grade an essay or a research paper, anything with using strictly A I. Maybe you can get A I, run it through an A I grader, and then go back and, and evaluate it from there, but this has happened. And A, and, and, and a student, students were emailed A I grading reports with little to no information about what they should do differently or suggestions perhaps. And so it was of no value to the students, so they can't, they can't improve on their writing if they're getting an A I-generated report instead of a, their teacher who knows them sitting down reading their paper. I can see how you might use it in, in combination with an A I checker to just maybe check spelling, grammar, or whatever.
Well, I mean, grammally, grammally is a, is a, as you know, a grammar checker. That, that's been around for years.
Somewhat subjective.
Right, right.
Yes. Um, but I don't, I don't think our teachers should be relying on A I for grading purposes, because a lot of our subjects are subjective, and I just didn't see in this policy where that is addressed. Now, I also want to say that as an E, I'm not an E L A teacher, but if I was an E L A teacher and I was having to grade a hundred essays, I can see how you would think, well, A I can help me get through it faster. So I wanna be empathetic towards that, teachers of that subject. And if the workload is just to grade, you know, possibly allow for more planning time so that they are not tempted to use A I for grading. Um, allow them more time to grade and read every student's work instead of them feeling overwhelmed and resorting to A I. 'Cause I do wanna be empathetic towards those subjects that require human intervention.
Those subjects always require that.
Yes, yes. So it shouldn't have changed. Yes, I agree. I just don't see where that is addressed in this policy, and I think we could add something.
Okay, how, how about, uh, Mr., uh, Dr. Anderson had a, uh, suggestion. Now, y'all have to help me with what we just said before, 'cause I've completely forgot the sentence that I came up with that I thought was okay.
Yeah. Subjective. You said subjective.
What did I say? Uh, uh.
Teachers.
Teachers may not use A I solely to grade subjective.
Material.
Material. If you do solely, that means they can use it for spell checking and all that kinda stuff.
And I understand that, yes. But you, you should not, in my opinion, rely solely on an A I checker to check, uh, of work that could be subjective, or writing, whatever else there is.
So I think if we, so what Ms. Westmoreland has written down is, teachers may not use A I solely for checking subjective material.
Yeah, grading, assessing, yes.
For, did, did you say checking?
Or assessing.
Grading. Not checking, but that should be grading.
Grading or assessing.
Assessing or grading.
Same difference.
Yes.
In other words, A I should not issue a grade.
Exactly.
You could, I don't.
Make sure you say A I.
If you wanted to be super clear about it, in other words, A I shall not issue a grade.
Right, right.
Okay.
No, that, that was.
Amendment.
Sorry.
For the record, I, I checked the M O U and it is not.
It would be, so. Yes. I think that's good.
Ms. Matthews, that would be amendment to the.
Yes, we would need an amendment.
I thought this, okay. Wait, I thought this was different. So we're just amending the motion?
She already, they already have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, so we would need to do an amendment.
They already have a motion on the floor, so now they, to change anything in that, then there has the amendment to it, to the, the work. And after that, if that passes, then go back to the main motion.
Yeah, we have to vote on the amendment, and then we go back to the original motion, so.
Okay. So somebody has to make a motion to amend it?
Somebody has to make a motion, so.
I make the motion to amend it.
In other words, what'd you get to?
I'll second it.
All right. And what is the specific wording?
Uh, Mr. Daywood, can you read it off?
Yeah, okay. So what I think, what I think you're wanting is teachers may not use A I solely for subjective, for grading subjective material. In other words, A I's cannot issue grades, or, I mean, that might not be the best way to word it.
And like, and, and Mr. Parsley was saying, you know, you might wanna add in there grading or assessing. grading or assessing. I don't know.
What'd you say?
I just, I suggested the word assessing rather than grading, but they, I mean.
Uh, assessing is, is probably better than grading.
Assessing's more appropriate.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so I, I have a suggestion.
Please suggest.
I, I, I think maybe the word solely needs to go before AI instead of after, because it changes the meaning of the sentence.
Okay.
If you'll follow me. If you say, teachers may not solely use AI for grading of a, eh, of subjective material, you're saying that they cannot just use the AI for the grading. They must use other means to grade it. But if you move solely to after AI, um, i- in my mind, it changes the meaning of that sentence.
Okay.
And I don't know, eh, can anybody see what?
So how do you think it should be?
No, I, I just, I feel like you could move solely, um, prior to AI. Teachers may not solely use AI for assessment of subjective material.
I agree with that.
Rather than putting solely after you assess it.
Yes, yes, agree.
And this is to be placed under ethical and use of staff?
Staff, yes.
I think it was, where I thought it would work pretty good would be on line twenty-four, right after data, such as creating instructional materials, notes, images, or analyzing data. Teachers may not, does that seem like a good place to put that sentence?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
That seems like the most appropriate place to put it. Thank you all for listening to me on that.
All right, so do we have our wording? So your, your motion without appropriate wording?
Yes.
All right, so Ms. Matthews makes that motion, that, the motion for amendments? And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones, seconds? All right, so, um, any discussion on that amendment?
May I have a comment here, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This is an interesting discussion. I'm laughing at it to the extent the State Department of Education is now in the process of using AI, you know, in certain grade levels, they have to write an essay.
Yeah.
And right now, the State Department of Education is looking at a process whereby they can use AI to grade these written tests. But right now, it's in the planning stages where they're gonna let the AI read them and then let a real person read them and see if there's any correlation.
Right.
That'd be interesting.
And, and experiments like that can and probably should be done to see how does AI grade compared to how I grade and how well do they, how effective is it, you know? But it's gonna take a while to.
All right, voting on the amendment? And can you please read that back again, just for the record?
Okay, this is the one, eh, this will be placed under ethical use of staff under line twenty-four. Teachers may not solely use AI for subjective, for assessing subjective material.
Subjective.
Subjective.
Did you say of or sub?
For assessing subjective material.
Okay, that is the amendment. Um, Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine to zero. Now we're back to our original motion to approve the policy as modified by the amendment. Uh, Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
I will vote aye, that passes nine to zero. Now we move on to policy, um, let's see, well, uh, six point seven oh one changed to two point six oh one, is that? No, it's both of those. What's that? There's two policies together. Oh, is it two policies together? Okay. They're a conjunction of each other. All right. And, eh, so I need to get the discussion going, a motion to approve the policies.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hansert and Mr. Cordell? All right, eh, discussion. Mr. Hansert?
Well, I just, what, what was we, was it brought up for? I mean, other, what are we trying to change here?
I think it's in red on the policy, so I believe this was Policy Committee. I believe record-keeping was the only.
Yeah, the, the, that was the only difference. It was, basically, we had two policies. One was record, record-keeping, one was fundraising. And it was like, why have two different things that it, eh, you know, it looks to be like the fundraiser should have the record-keeping part in it. Well, when you put it into the fundraising, well, then you can call it all just fundraising activities and it's all in one. Because part of, this was just part of the normal review that we have to do every year of every single policy. And it was just a combination, trying to take two point six oh one, combine it with six point seven oh one, which the combining was just bringing that one little thing over from the other one, the record-keeping part that's in red. That's all it was.
So there was really no, no wording change, it was just consolidating two policies? Okay. Answer your question? All right. So, eh, any further discussion on this?
Is this policy, um, reviewed with staff and teachers every year or?
Uh, yes, the Policy Committee, which is several principals and, eh, a couple of board members, and then, of course, you're, you're very strictly, if you looked down at the bottom, all the legal references and cross, cross-references, they don't give you much room on that stuff.
Yeah.
It's dictated, it's controlled.
I just want to make sure our coaches and our staff and everybody is aware of what it says and.
Yeah, this was not been changed since, eh, well, now it's been changed if this goes through, but the last time, eh, was twenty seventeen.
Three D.
That's when it was issued, last.
I just, if I was a coach, I would want to know what this says, cause it's.
We, we didn't go by it. We haven't been going by it for a while.
All right.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
Nothing.
It was. Policy. I believe that's, um, that was not my comment, so I.
Why haven't we not been going by the policy?
Uh, would you like me to read it or, on number one?
What your concern is, I guess, Scott, is what I meant.
Yeah, well, cause we were, we was doing things that wasn't in the policy, I guess, Mr. Powell.
I'm not sure what your, what your concern is. I mean, and, and I'll obviously, because every fundraiser that schools do has to come through, be approved by the director of schools. You know, since I've been here, I'll approve sometimes five or six a week, depending on the school. And I'm not, I'm not aware, and I may be wrong, I, I stand corrected, and I'm not aware of anything that's, any fundraiser that's taken place in the school setting that hasn't come through our office. But I stand corrected.
Yeah. Number one there is fundraising activities shall be authorized by the board and shall be for the purpose of supplementing funds for established school programs and not for supplementing funds, which are the responsibilities of the board.
I agree with the first sentence, that the board hasn't, over the time that I've ever been involved with fundraising activities, the board, and I don't think that you folks want me once a week to approve fundraising activities to the school. I think the board, through, eh, whatever, has given that responsibility to the director of schools.
In line number four.
Do what?
In line number four.
Yes. But I, I can assure you just about if, and I'm not trying to be smart, if y'all want to approve fundraising activities, you're gonna have to meet once a week and sometimes twice a week, especially during a lot of athletic seasons going on.
I think, and, and this is just, this is all I'm gonna say, I think what this is meant to explain is, the board approves fundraising activities. I don't think that's meaning, Scott, that we approve, eh, golf to go sell candy. I think it's for the board, the board approves the system to have fundraisers. Then the director of schools comes down here and he approves the selling of Reese's cups or cokes.
Has to be approved of the school principal.
Right, and so there is another step there.
We had some this year, we took it to high school, my name is Mr. Parsley, where one organization has wanted to raise funds using this particular vendor. Another fundraiser, another group has asked to use that same idea to fundraise, and it's been denied because we're trying to let two groups use the same thing. If they're gonna be selling calendars for some reason, two or three groups can't sell calendars that are not associated with that, but the, the principal has to first approve them and then it comes up to the director's office for approval. Is the way it works now.
I know it's not in here, but at one time, there was a limit on the number of fundra- fundraisers that a school could have during the school year. I guess that's gone away.
I think that's probably been in the past.
But it's not anymore.
It's, it's, it's not anymore. I mean, I don't know where it, I haven't seen that policy.
Right.
At one time, there used to be, you know, have so many fundraisers.
Mm-hmm.
But I would say Mr. Parsley has what, a hundred and fifty a year?
I could get an answer to that pretty quickly. We have a, we have a little sheet with it on there. Uh, that's not a scratch.
But, but, but remember, that's, that's different groups. You're looking at boosters, you're, I think the school itself is only allowed two fundraisers, but you can start breaking down into your boosters and all the different groups. Your support organizations, that, that's, that's where you're starting to get into the multiple different fundraisers. But, but, Ms. Jones, I, I think you're looking still at two per a school by itself. Now, PTO might be a little different.
But it doesn't say it in our policy.
I, I, I'm, I'm just going off of what the law states, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I, I believe the law states two. I, I, I need to look it back up, but I believe it's two.
Oh, you would think they would have it in the, the TSBA policy, wouldn't you, if they could only allow two?
Let us check that out, I'm not sure.
Right.
I know at one time, there used to be two fundraisers.
Yeah, and I just thought, we did it as a, as a board, not as state requirement.
I think Ms. Frida is right.
Fundraiser, they could have a picture fundraiser and maybe a harvest festival that was school-sponsored. And then, but the PTOs and PTAs and all the athletic organizations and all the CTE organizations and booster clubs and so forth, that's pretty much unlimited as far as I know right now, it hasn't been, I think.
I don't think I've, eh, would, cause I'm pretty good on the law on that. I don't think, don't hold me to it, but I do not think there's anything in the law restricting to two.
Is it not anymore?
For the school system, no. But I think Ms. Frida was correct, that it used to be a known, kind of around here, kind of thing.
Now, that probably would, could have been a board policy back many, many years ago.
Yeah, yeah. I think the, what me and Ms. Matthews caught, eh, multi-phone calls about was us giving money away. Was the parents that was, was getting on to us, eh, and was asking us why and, eh, you know, while they were having fundraisers and turning around and giving the money away to outside foundations.
I know the situation you're speaking of, Mr. Hansert. I'm not disagreeing with you, but when that fundraiser was advertised, it was advertised as such. So it wasn't something that was, we're doing it, but we're gonna give this to this organization. That was in the approval process and that was in the literature that went out, we're gonna have a fundraiser, X number of dollars and some of it will be donated to a certain organization. I agree that, I think we looked at it fairly close and that could have been a gray, a very gray area. I agree with that.
I, I think what we prob-
I know that's what you're talking about.
What we probably need to do in those situations then, Dr. Powell, is, that probably needs to come to the board. Well, then that would take a policy change because you have policy that states that in that circumstance, as long as it's between the coach and the principal appro- approves, I can't remember the policy number. I'm, I'm looking real quick here. Eh, all of that is cleared up in policy. I don't, I don't think it's in there, Robert. It's not in, it's not in the fundraising policy.
My knowledge, that, that's happened one time this year.
So I, I have a little something on that, just, cause I, I, I sought out some advice from Ben Torres with TSBA. And I'll just read what he said to me in an email. Funds are in a restricted account and must be used for the purpose in which they were raised. If it was a fundraiser, and he just used this as an example, he's not saying this group did this, but he said if it was a fundraiser for the softball team, the funds must be used for the softball team. Now, what you're talking about is the, if, it, but if, if the parents and the people raising the money were aware, I think that changes it a little bit, that they were aware, that they were raising money for an outside organization. I think that, that may be an exception to this.
And this, I think.
Because they were told, we're raising it for this other foundation. Now, if they were never told and they're out here beating on doors to raise money for track, and then you come in and you give it away to something else and they were not aware of that, I think that's where this comes in. But if you're saying that, that the people raising the money were aware that the money would go somewhere else, I, I see that that would be acceptable.
In this one situation, I think that, that was addressed probably on, when the brochure came out, talking about fundraiser in the.
Yes.
The bottom, on the bottom line, it is also mentioned that some of this money will be used for other purposes other than the basketball program or the volleyball program or whatever program.
I think as long as they are made aware of that, then I think that you're covered, in my opinion. I, I didn't know that that.
That's kind of the thought process, but.
That's how I interpreted it.
And has a law license and I don't.
I don't either. Yeah.
Just because I.
I don't think it's all in there. Just because I've asked auditor this specific question, um, we had a different incident with a different school, and I reached out to our school auditor and asked the question, can we give to outside venue, outside companies, outside donations to, like Dream for Wave? It wasn't that one specific. But, um, it's, she, he said, as long as it's in our paperwork, and it was advertised to do that, as long as it's written in all of our paperwork and we have the approval from the director of schools and the intent was written, written, um, in the paperwork and we didn't hide anything or misadvertise something, it was allowable.
I can see that.
And so when we do get audited, those things are asked, we have to provide those documents.
Okay.
And the approval, so all of that is usually reviewed at the school level when we go through our audit.
That makes sense.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve this.
I think, Mr. Coon has one thing.
I got, I got one quick, I got one quick thing.
Okay.
And that is, on, um, lotteries, you know, I don't, you know, I know of a couple of times recently where raffle tickets have been sold to raise money, and I know, I mean, that's illegal. So, I mean, I, you know, that's the only thing that, you know, you know, that has to be.
Any game of chance.
Exactly, I mean, that's a raffle ticket, a drawing, putting your name in a hat, whatever, that, that's, you know, I, I know that's illegal and, you know.
But you can submit, like, I think the quarterback club submitted to the State Gaming Commission because they've been established over five years to do a raffle. And if the General Assembly passes that, that's the same thing, eh, the Dusty Elam Foundation does. They submit every year to the Gaming Commission, Tennessee Gaming Commission, and they'll approve it for them to do the ticket raffle.
Right, but, you know.
It can be done, so you'll still have to have a thing, just in case somebody could, you'll have to have a restriction in there.
Well, not, not every, eh, supporting organization for the school is gonna do that.
Not every one, but you still gotta have something in there to govern them if you need to.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you know, that hasn't, you know, there's been instances that that hasn't been followed. It, it's what I'm getting at, y- you know?
Oh, yeah.
And, and I mean, that's something that needs to be reiterated to, you know, to all these groups that, you know, you can't do lotteries, you know, any lottery-based fundraiser. That's all that, that I was getting to.
If I could, and I, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the high school and I, I can't speak of, on behalf of any schools and don't know whether any of the other schools in the district have had, uh, any sort of fundraiser that, uh, would be considered as, as what you're speaking of. Uh, but at the high school, there, every year for many years, there have been, um, if you wanna call it a raffle, a drawing where tickets are sold, game of chance. Um, we checked on this two or three years ago with Mr. Chuck Kegel. And those drawings can occur where winners are, are established. However, when the drawing occurs, the winner must then win a game of skill. And, uh, that game of skill, I'm just gonna give some examples. That game of skill could be throw a football through a hoop, put a basketball through a hoop. Uh, those are just examples. I, I can say this, uh, with absolute certainty. Um, all of the drawings that I'm aware of, uh, that we've had at the high school, I know the way they've been set up is when those drawings occur, then there is a game of skill that that person must win to actually get the prize. And those games of skill make those fundraisers legal, according to Mr. Kegel. Uh, we, we did a, and I say we, I, I, it would've, Dr. Lawson would've been involved in that back, I wanna say two or three years ago. I don't know if Mr. Shores or anyone else here remembers, uh, that specifically, but it's, it's been some time ago.
We have a couple policies. Two point nine zero zero is student activity funds management. Uh, and then there's one more, I still, I've not found it, I had to go through my photos. So we, we have other po- policies that get into that, Nick Kay.
I, I, like I said, you know, in talking to Mr. Torres about this as well, I talked to him, Ms. Matthews talked to him. When you go to giving money out to outside foundations, that's what he was saying, it would be better to bring something like that up to a board. When you're working inside of the, the, the school system and giving money inside the school system is one thing. But whenever you start, that's what all the parents was so rabid about. And Ms. Matthews, I think, will back me up on that. Uh, is one thing, but whenever you're giving it away to the outside foundations, that's whenever it, it starts getting into a gray area. And it, it'd probably be better if we brought that up before the board. And there is nothing in our policy that says that we have to do that. And that's what Mr. Torres was talking about. He looked it up for us. If I'm incorrect, Ms. Matthews.
Yeah, that was under the assumption though, that the, the people raising the money had not disclosed that they were going to give it to an outside organization. But it sounds like in the instance that we were referring to, that was disclosed, so.
Two point nine zero zero, the activity funds of each school, whatever the source, all that student activity funds shall be under the jurisdiction of the board, but under the specific control of the school principal. That's our policy, two point nine zero zero.
Get some left over this. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve, um, policy two point six oh one, which consolidates the former two six oh one and the six point seven oh one. And, um, I guess, uh, Ms. Hodgson, um, Ms. Jones.
Uh.
Mr. Hanser.
Hi.
Ms. Yinch.
Hi.
Mr. Cordell.
Hi.
Mr. Gillie.
Hi.
Ms. Coon, Mr. Coon.
Hi.
Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
Full vote, that passes eight two zero. Now, the RUP policy, um, given the change we made to the AI policy, does it change the RUP policy?
Yes, all we would do is, we, we would mirror our, the AI section of the RUP to match what the policy ended up doing.
Okay.
I'm, I may need a motion on that.
Yes, uh, we do need to make a motion, so.
I shall move.
Okay.
I'll say.
Mr. Coon, okay. Um, discussion.
I can read the whole thing out loud if you want. Oh, God, please don't.
No. All right, so the motion is to, uh, approve the RUP policy with the modification that we made to the AI policy, correct?
Right, which is in, embedded in this.
All right. Any further discussion, then we will have Mr. Hanser.
Hi.
Ms. Yinch.
Hi.
Mr. Cordell. Gillie.
No.
No?
No, I guess. I just wanted to see if you-
I'm just taking it's your word, okay? Ms., Mr. Coon. Matthews.
Hi.
Ms. Hodgson.
See if everybody still wishes.
Uh.
And I will, that passes eight two zero. Okay, that concludes our exciting action agenda. Um, thanks for the great discussion. We have items for discussion, so, um, Mr. Coon, you wanna start us off?
Nah, I don't, I don't have anything. I believe we've discussed everything that I had.
Okay, Matthews?
I won't add any more than I've already added tonight, so I hope everybody's having a great summer.
Can we call question?
Stop it.
And Ms. Jones?
I just wanna make sure Mr. Hargrove doesn't quit after talking.
All right, Mr. Hanser.
Okay, to the theme.
Ms. Yinch.
I'm good.
Mr. Cordell.
I'm goo-
Mr. Gillie.
I'm good.
And, uh, I will just say, uh, thank you for, to Dr. Powell, you know, I know we gave you the plaque earlier.
I forgot about you, I couldn't see you.
And welcome to Mr. Hargrove and, you know.
No voice in time, it's been fun, but I gotta run.
We do have dinner afterwards, so. All right, committee reports.
Safety committee, do you wanna come forward?
I can, or?
Yeah, we handled the policy committee, cause that's all we've talked about, was those two.
Yeah.
For two meetings and twelve hours.
Okay.
It's Frida's fault.
All right. Leave it on Frida.
I'll take it.
She can handle it. Directors report.
Budget finance committee.
Oh.
If the board approves it, it'd have to come through the budget finance because it would be in addition to, uh, it's not in the budget at this time.
Current budget.
So it would have to be a come out of fund balance if the board approves it.
For the student fees.
For the Raptor.
Oh, for the, oh, right, all right, okay.
That might be something we wanna put in our work session agenda.
We can, yeah. Think it'd be a really nice thing for you to, thing is, it's about a full hour presentation, but it's really well done.
And maybe we'll be able to share that.
That's right, we decided it is.
We'll share that with you all, be worth your time watching.
Okay.
All right, director report then.
Salary and compensation me, uh, committee met, I shared with it via email that we talked about, um, head, head mechanic pay as well as the, um, stipends or, um, for our coaches, assistant coaches of minor sports. Uh, work session on June seventeenth coming up. We're currently in the middle of interviewing for the new union's principal position. Uh, we have narrowed eight down to two. Those two will, um, interview this Wednesday at central office and hopefully by Friday, we'll name our new leader at New Union.
All right.
Um, wrapping up a great school year, uh, getting ready for the next one. I've been meeting with board, with each of you all, I believe I have three left that I look forward to spending time with. Started meeting with the principals this week, ought to be done by next week. And, um, uh, last but not least, and I, yes, I'm speaking very quickly, Dr. Powell.
Sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your knowledge. I appreciate your friendship. You have a heart as big as a cantaloupe. You have a servant's heart and, uh-
Never heard that before.
It means a lot to me.
Yeah, I've had conversations every day about something that's come up or hadn't come up or might come up or will come up. We have, we're not finished yet.
No, sir, he, he is heaping it on and I appreciate it. I'm trying to learn something every day and I appreciate your mentorship.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'm, I'm sure you're diving right in, so. All right, Mr. Shores, capital projects update.
Yes, several things going on. We still have window laminate being installed. Uh, right now, they're mainly doing the ceiling. Uh, before long, we'll be doing the vinyl, hopefully. Uh, but it's moving pretty quick, well, I say quick, for the amount of windows we have. Uh, met with the, uh, Paul and I, or Ms. Parsley and I, met with, uh, Wool the other day uh, about the door, doors and the partitions and hallways at the high school. And making a couple little tweaks, getting ready to take it back to the safety committee. So if you're on it, uh, we'll be discussing that before long. Um, gym bleachers, uh, I was asked to, to go over the modifications, where we are on it. Uh, they are wanting to start on it on September the eighth, but there's a few problems with, uh, high schools afraid that it's gonna conflict with possibly homecoming. And homecoming is one of those things you try not to conflict with. Uh, and also it's, uh, with volleyball as well, uh, but, but they are working to get, and it comes down to getting the materials. Uh, but, but we are working through that. Athletic lighting, when Wool was here, they were reaching out to Musco to, to make sure that what they quoted to us on pricing for the lighting, what they have planned for the engineering of the, the electrical, will work with the lighting that they, um, quoted to us. The high school paving, uh, they have started doing the drainage, they're digging the trenches to put the drains in. Uh, a lot of work going there, uh, still a lot, lot left to be done. Um, just FYI, for those that own the safety committee, the safety bullards, uh, we've started that work at, uh, the middle school. It's a process and, uh, so we're working through it and they should be starting to go in probably within the next week or so. Uh, we, we started actually cut core drilling, so that, that process is moving on. Uh, the furniture for, uh, central office costs high school and is, uh, supposed to be delivered during the week of June the twenty-third. High school's countertop, uh, there was one countertop that was not replaced and they did come in and, and will be replacing that. Our guys will actually do the install, but we hit by the, the, the actual countertop. Uh, the CHS, well, it says CHS, but it's the, the track over at Raider Academy. Um, and this is gonna be materials or equipment that's gonna be used by both the high school as well as the middle school. Uh, they have bought some of the materials and they're starting to show up. Uh, we still have a whole lot of other things that needs to be done for making it competitive ready for some of the field events. That's all I've got, unless you've got some questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Shores?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, on the bleachers, I, I, I believe our, our completion date is October the thirty-first, isn't it?
I would actually have to look, it's the Monday after fall break, so whatever date that is, I have to look it up. Uh, it's the Monday after fall break and it looks like we're, we're in pretty good shape. But if, part of that is, if we, i- if we are the reason why they can't get it done, then it's a little harder to, to hold to that date. If we're the ones saying, no, you can't come in, I have a little harder time saying, it's your fault. Uh, but, but the date that we did give them is the, the Monday after fall break. And they're wanting to start, like I said, September the eighth, so they should be able to get it done. But if, if Paul says, no, we can't do it that day, then we might have to work, we're gonna have to work with them as well.
Oh, I just had one question. What's the status of getting the walls painted at North Coffee where all that flooding came in the gym?
I got some prices, uh, just gotta get, get moving on with getting it taken care of.
So we're, we're gonna have to eat that cost, and it's not the-
We will be, we will be eating the cost on the paint on the inside of the gym, yes.
And, and, but the leaks are stopped, is that correct?
Not all of the leaks are stopped and we are still dealing with that. Uh, Dr. Clark and I have been in, in contact with the, the contractor, uh, trying to get that taken care of. But as far as in the gym, I, I actually talked to, to Mr. Dr. Clark today about it. He said there was no leaks in the gym. Uh, the leaks that we're having is actually the connecting hall.
Okay, but New Union has no leaks. I mean, I'm just concerned about the construction that was, you know, the renovation construction and New Union's, they don't have any leaks now?
We don't have any leaks that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Uh, but there are still some things that's going play, taking place. Uh, Dr. Powell went over some of those, I think it was last meeting. Uh, there's some, some things about the roof that did not get approved and, and there's, and we've actually, we're talking to, uh, Mr. Kegel now about it. So, we're in the middle of all that.
Okay.
But it's not leaking.
Mr. Shore, what do we know about, I mean, occasionally we'll hear something about the, um, Hickerson and East Coffee. Where is that process? Cause it seems like it's falling off the end of the world.
And, and you're correct, it's, and I always, whenever I start saying the, the word, I'm gonna say it wrong, the demographer is-
Demographer.
Demographer, thank you, demographer. I knew I was gonna say it wrong, I, I, I told you before. Uh, it's in their hands right now on getting the data, uh, so that ball is rolling through that part. We have to get it first before we move to the next steps, so it's, it's in their hands right now.
Are they limited as to when they have to have it done? Or did we just kinda leave it out there?
We, we do not limit it, but they have reached out, I've given them some data. Uh, we're still waiting for, from a couple here to give them some data that's on us for holding them up. Uh, so I, I'm waiting on that and since we get it to them, hopefully we'll, we'll be moving a little bit quicker then.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's nothing further, motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Mr. Cordell?
Second.
Mr. Hanser, all in favor, signify by-